America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. Call to order, we are absent one current member. We do have a quorum. Public comment, is there any public comment not related to an agenda item? None. Any board comment?
No.
Okay. Then we'll get right into it. We have a continued public hearing for 1325 Mass Ave waiver request.
Can storm water permit?
Well, let us continue the public hearing.
In the storm water, I think, the storm water permit, right?
Okay.
Should we address the waiver first?
That's up to you.
And I think that probably makes more sense.
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay. Then we would like to address the waiver first.
Excellent. Great, thank you. My name is Frank McPartland from De Charmandelis, the representative of the applicant. Prior to, two weeks ago, when the meeting was continued, we received notice from the town that the building commissioner considered this a change of use, from the residential use to the earth removal use. Once I got that notification from Adam, I prepared a letter requesting a waiver from specific approval by the planning board for the change of use, given the in-depth review process that we have been undergoing with the earth removal package itself through this stormwater permit process. The letter documented the items within the site design principles in section 250-8.4D, many of them being not applicable, excuse me. Those included the landscaping provision. I noted that that was, for the most part, not applicable at this time, other than the proposed per-perimeter screening, which I can discuss. The site design principles requested the locations of driveways and curb cuts. I documented that the proposed temporary access has been brought up during planning board process and previously to, my understanding, has been deemed adequate by the board. Additionally, Mast dot has had no comments on the proposed temporary access driveway and is awaiting town approvals to issue the temporary access permit associated with that. Their service roads and connections of parking lots are not applicable. Parking and loading areas, again, not applicable, other than the, I noted that the proposed loam screening location may fall under that, which, again, has been discussed with the planning board and the location has been moved as requested at the previous hearing. Stormwater management, site designs principles, the submitted applications document compliance with the town of Lunenburg stormwater and Mass DEP stormwater regulations. And that, again, was peer reviewed by the board's consultant and they found that we had met both those regulations. Lighting requirements would not be applicable at this time, as it is an earth removal operation and the hours of operation are restricted to 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. So there wouldn't be any site lighting. The application package does meet the applicable standards for site plan review as outlined in 250-8.4E, as outlined below. Compliance with Lunenburg protective bylaw. The project had been submitted to the town of Lunenburg in compliance with the earth removal, stormwater and storm sewers and wetland regulations protective bylaws and is in the midst of those public hearings. Traffic safety and ease of access. The proposed access driveway has been discussed during the planning board process and, again, seems to have been deemed adequate. Additionally, Mast dot had no comments at this time. Safety inadequacy of the driveway layout, essentially the same response. Safe and adequate means of disposal of sewage, garbage and rubbish. The existing property, the residential house, is served by town sewer. Residential garbage and rubbish would continue to be disposed of through the town trash removal services. Any construction garbage and rubbish would be disposed of in accordance with applicable regulations. So there'd be a segregation of whatever construction debris may be, that may be developed, it wouldn't go through the residential garbage. Safe and adequate water supply and distribution. The existing property is served by town water. Safe and adequate storm drainage. The submitted applications document compliance, again, with the town of Lunenburg stormwater and Mass DEP stormwater regulations. Prevention of soil erosion during and after construction. The submitted applications document the measures proposed to prevent soil erosion during and after construction. Those were on the soil erosion control plan and notes. Lost my place. Open space provisions, those wouldn't be applicable at this time, other than the discussion about the town of Lunenburg Zone 3 buffer, which I can get into further when we address the planning board comments, but I document compliance with that 50% requirement within the Zone 3. Compatibility of soil and subsoils to type and intensity of the project. The soils and subsoils are compatible with an earth removal project. Exterior lighting, not applicable at this time. And snow storage areas, designated, snow storage areas are also not applicable at this time. So quite a bit of the site plan review standards are either documented or not applicable to this type of project. And we felt that that was sufficient grounds for a waiver from the formal site plan review project, especially given the in-depth level of the review that's been going on, on this project.
Thank you. Who wants to start?
Well, we're talking specifically about the waiver, correct?
Yes.
And I guess this is a question, I think, for Adam, and this is something we talked about at the last meeting. Under site plan review, while many of the standards do not apply, however, the preface to the whole section is that the planning board will look at any site plan approval to make sure it's not injurious or affect the neighboring properties. And that's really where I'm stuck, is I think that, and I have a number of questions relative to the site. You mentioned town water. One of the conditions of the permit from the selectmen is regular watering to control dust. Is the water proposed to come from the home?
I believe some of the water would be coming from the home and I want to say the client has mentioned, the applicant has said they would have possibly a water trailer onsite as well, but I would need to verify that.
Yeah. So I have questions relative to how the operation is going to take place. And I did take a look at the permit issued by the board of selectmen, which requires a dust control plan be submitted, water and calcium chloride required as needed to control dust. And the question that I have is what is the water supply? The other questions I have are relative to the operation itself. Is there going to be an office onsite? What are the facilities for any staff or for any workers? Is that the home? Is that porta potties? What is the proposed facilities for staff that are working on the site? Specifically, I mean, you're proposing a screening plant, so I'm assuming someone's going to be working at that screening plant. So I have questions relative to the operation that would be covered under a site plan review. Additionally, I have questions on the permit itself. And thank you for forwarding a copy of the stormwater handbook, and I did take a look at that for specifically for infiltration basins. And I have a question for you from an engineering standpoint. It talks about in this handbook that for critical areas, pretreatment must be removed at least 44% of the TSS.
Correct.
Now, it also says in that same section that uncontaminated runoff can be infiltrated directly to an infiltration basin without pretreatment. So I'm assuming when you talk about the deep sum catch basin, you're assuming that that additional pretreatment, the 25% from the deep sum catch basin, would be required at phase two, but not required at phase one. That's the way I'm interpreting your plan. And the question that I have is because it's within an AC/EC, the way that I'm reading the stormwater handbook is that in areas of an AC/EC, it specifically talks about for critical areas, pretreatment must remove at least 44% of the TSS. This is a critical area, so I would question whether or not that is triggered prior to phase two or not. So that's a question that I have, that I would like to have posed to our environmental engineer, because I've gone through that handbook ad nauseam. So the, I have a number of other questions. The perk rate, what's the perk rate on the site?
The perk rate? We don't have a perk rate on the site. It was, it's classified as a C soil, which under the raws rate, which I didn't count in the basin, so it's not coming immediately to mind, but I can provide that number.
So that's another question I have, because in the handbook that you provided, it talks about specifically the perk rate and when pretreatment would be required, and that really is depending, it's more than, less, greater than 2.4 minutes per inch, and so I don't know what your perk rate is. I did know-
It's not greater than that, but I can provide that number.
Okay, because I did look at the revised plan and I am seeing test bits on the revised plan that weren't on the original plan.
Correct.
When was that testing?
We, I went back out to do confirmatory testing in February.
Okay. Okay. Because, as you know, in the stormwater handbook, it's required to have a minimum of three deep holes in the proposed area of the infiltration basin. So I did look at that data. How many square feet of infiltration basin is there?
The bottom end of the basin is 5,618 square feet.
So, then that raises another question, because page 91 of the information that you provided says one monitoring well must be installed on the basin floor per every 5,000 square feet of basin. So, and I don't see a monitoring well proposed.
We can propose that.
So, you know, that's a concern. The location of abutting wells and septics. I don't see those on the plan. That was one of the notes that Jim Griffey had. He wanted to know what is the distance between the proposed earth removal and wells on abutting lots? And I don't see that on the plan. Have you identified that?
The residential houses are all on town water and the only nearby septic is in that bottom corner as identified by the abutter.
Okay. So the septic for this adjacent property, I did have an opportunity to go out and-
It's the north property.
Yeah. The, where is their septic? Because they indicated it was down by the road closer to the property line.
Correct, yes. It would be off, if it's down closer to the road, it would be off locus on the main plans.
Okay. So, and I'm not sure what the limit of excavation is for that. The requirement is that it needs to be a minimum of 50 feet from any soil absorption system and 100 feet from a well. So I'd like to know what that distance is, because I don't know where the septic system is. So, questions about the operation itself, you know, where are the facilities for the office? Is there going to be an office? Where are the facilities for the workers? Questions on stormwater that I just talked about. And one of the comments that Jim Griffey had in looking at the plans is, his comment was, "All phases of construction shall be done to minimize noise, odor and dust that would be injurious of public health and/or cause a condition of air pollution." And I guess that goes back to the whole site plan review. In order to address his comment, a site plan review would be required. And I have to be perfectly honest, I'm concerned about the review done by Graves Engineering. And the reason that I'm concerned about that is because under DEP guidelines in the stormwater handbook, these deep hole tests are required for an infiltration basin and a minimum of three within the infiltration basin. And why that wasn't picked up in the review greatly concerns me. Because, as the engineer just indicated, those tests weren't done until February. We received this plan long before February. So I would question, why is our reviewing engineer did not pick up that these tests were not conducted? I would also question the monitoring well requirement. So I have serious concerns relative to the review that was done and would like the opportunity to discuss that with the engineer at some point. On the ENF, you amended that. The original one said that it was going to remain at 9.44 trips per day, which is the calculation for a single family home. The change on February 28th indicates that now you're indicating 15.44 trips per day?
Yes. In discussions with the MEPA analyst, they requested that we quantify the earth removal activity for the trips per day.
Okay.
So that number is, if we took that 1,500 truckloads, divided that by 52 weeks, five days a year, and then add that to the, that was approximately six vehicle trips. And we added that into the-
9.44.
For the residential. Yes.
And I guess the residential, I don't know what the choose now is. So are you taking away that 9.44 trips for the residential and just saying that the earth removal site will have six and the residential will have 9.44? Or are you combining them together and eliminating the single family home component?
Well, we documented the number of trips during construction and then, let me see how that came back together again. So that would be, that would be total for the wall or earth removal is, that's the total theoretical maximum, or the total theoretical amount of vehicle trips that would be occurring during earth removal.
But what I'm asking is, right now, the single family home's going to remain on the property. I don't know whether it's occupied or not. If it, my understanding was that was going to remain for some period of time.
Yes.
Now, if you attribute 9.44 trips for the single family home-
Yes.
Then you're only leaving six trips-
A day.
-for the earth removal.
And that's the estimation, yes.
Okay. So only six trips a day out of that site. You're not going to utilize the nine?
This is, that's an estimate for how, how many trips per day would be coming off the site, yes.
Okay. Okay. So those are my comments.
So are any of those comments reviewable under the stormwater permit?
Yes.
All of them?
No. Under stormwater, it is the total size of the infiltration basin, which would require a monitoring well. It is the 44% of the TSS for critical areas, the perk rate, which we don't have, the location of the wells and septics. All of those are associated with stormwater.
All right. So since we're doing the waiver request right now, which ones aren't, which ones would only be able-
The waiver would be Jim Griffey's comments, that all phases of construction shall be done to minimize noise, odor and dust, and that would be injurious of public health and/or cause a condition of air pollution. The facilities for staff, whether, what's proposed at the home? Is there any office proposed? The water supply for watering? And the trips per day? So those would all be relative to the waiver.
Okay.
That would be looked at under a waiver versus a stormwater permit.
Okay. Is there any requirement for perk testing in stormwater?
Yes, there's a requirement in the inf-
In stormwater bylaw, as far as I know?
To use an infiltration basin.
Because we require the use of the stormwater handbook, so yes.
Okay.
And it's not actually a perk test for infiltration basin. That's a Title, a Title V septic perk test is not inaccurate.
Right.
So I can document the infiltration rate that the, and it's actually, at the bottom of the site, it's actually an A soil. The rest of the site is a C per the USDA regs, and I can provide that number. I didn't include it in the stormwater report because I didn't want to have that extra count.
Well, in order to determine if an infiltration process is appropriate, it talks about the hours per inch.
Yes.
And so that calculation is to determine whether or not an infiltration is appropriate. Now, I don't know if you, I have one other question relative to stormwater. So Mass DEP requires that borings, a minimum of three borings for each infiltration basin. And Mass DEP requires that borings be at least 20 feet deep or extend to the depth of the limiting layer. Looking at the test data on this plan, I'm seeing no refusal, but I'm not seeing that you went 20 feet deep.
Okay.
So that's outside of what's required. So I'm seeing, you know, 12, I'm seeing 10 feet, I'm seeing 10.5 feet, you know, no refusal at 12 feet, no refusal groundwater at 59 inches, but I'm not seeing that you did a boring at least 20 feet deep or extend to the depth of the limiting layer, which is a requirement of the DEP handbook. So I have serious issues about the stormwater components as well as the components that would be looked at under site plan review.
My understanding was that we, the stormwater handbook did used to allow perk tests, but doesn't anymore for drainage basins.
Right. Perk tests themselves, a standard septic perk test is inaccurate for infiltration rates.
That's what I understood.
Right.
So that's the only reason I question that. All right. So specifically to the waiver request, do you-
Just a point for the applicant to consider, we're short one member.
Yes.
So you would need unanimous vote to approve the waiver, so.
I have a question. Is this the letter requesting the waiver?
Yes.
Okay. So in the first paragraph, you're talking about the inability to gain a second access permit? Applied for, unable to apply at this time for another entrance to the state highway.
Correct. So our original plan with this application to Mast dot was to construct a true paved permanent entrance at the, at the site, at the construction access. And when we sent that into them for review, they said that because you don't have a permanent use for the project that would necessitate that sort of entrance, they were only going to consider a temporary access permit, not a permanent access.
And how is that a problem?
It was to sort of demonstrate that they weren't considering the earth removal, any sort of permanent use.
Okay.
Just-
Okay. So it was trying to bolster your reasoning for-
Correct.
Okay. So our regs can be more restrictive and our building official has deemed, written a letter. So I don't know, do we have anything more or do we want to just go for vote? I don't-
I would just like to confirm with the applicant that they do wish to vote, knowing that where we're-
We do have an application before the board to do the actual site plan approval, which is now-
On the 23rd, I believe.
It'll be in April.
It will not be April 13th. The Sentinel Enterprise was, for some reason or other, unable to run the ad today.
Oh, okay.
They notified us midday Friday and asked if Tuesday was acceptable, and Tuesday isn't acceptable because it's outside the statutory time limits. So we're on to April 13th.
Okay. So you're willing to have us make the vote now for the-
Yes, I think I have, yes.
Okay. So do we do that while the thing is open?
I mean, it's separate from the stormwater hearing, so you can do it now, you can do it after you discuss stormwater, that's up to you.
Okay. Does anybody have a preference?
Well, I think it makes sense to address the waiver first, especially where Mrs. Bertram has concerns that are either going to be addressed as part of the stormwater or part of the site plan. I think she would feel more comfortable knowing where we're at with things.
Okay, yeah.
I know I would.
Do you have something to say about the waiver request?
I do, if I could. I appreciate it, thank you. I just want to briefly address the building commissioner's letter, because it's-
You've got to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Bowen, 1686 Mass Ave, attorney for the applicant. I have a letter dated March 2nd, 2020, which I guess purports to be the building commissioner's determination that site plan review is applicable. It's not clear, it's still not clear to me. And halfway through his letter, he says, "Therefore, I feel it could warrant a significant enough change of use that the planning board could have the ability to provide input." I, I mean, he stopped short of an opinion, in my opinion, that this is required. So it's still, it's still our position that this is not a use, and there's no guidance really in this letter as to when earth removal that's incident to other uses of the property is allowed without a permit, when earth removal becomes so significant that it actually requires site plan review. There's no, there's no guidance in this letter, and we believe it still doesn't apply.
Okay.
We're concerned by the added delay, and I appreciate that it was not the town's fault, that it was not advertised in the paper, and now it's not March 2030 anymore, we're into April. So we hear your concerns, but we still don't think that this is required, because we still don't think it's a use.
Okay. Well, to speak to the letter that you mentioned, it was March 2nd?
Yes.
It was March 2nd? So the second sentence is, "It is my opinion, as the building commissioner zoning officer, that it does constitute a change of use," period. And that was our question. So in the second sentence, he responded to our question with an answer. And I think the rest of it is just kind of like hemming and hawing that you can do the waiver request and blah, 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 but our question was, is it actually a change of use, as propined by our zoning officer, building commissioner?
And we just disagree with his opinion. That's really all I wanted to make the board aware of.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, in that case, you would apply to the zoning board of appeals.
At this point, frankly, if this board doesn't grant the waiver, it appears that the most expeditious way to go about this is going to be to go through the site plan review, and we've already filed the application to do that. We are going to grudgingly do that, but we don't believe it's required.
I just wanted to make it clear that your appeal would be with them, not-
I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we want to, we want to make, have a vote on the waiver request? Is that what I understood?
I think that makes the most sense under the circumstances.
Okay. Do you have any further input on-
On the waiver request?
I just, a couple of quick questions. Dan Proctor, obviously applicant 1529 Mass Ave. So a couple of the questions that you asked, Paula, are those for the waiver request for the stormwater?
Some are for the waiver, some are for stormwater.
Okay. So as far as, I'm assuming you're talking about bathroom facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We typically onsite have a porta potty.
Okay.
The house has nothing to do with the earth removal.
So where's the water supply?
We're not going to have any offices, we're not going to have any construction trailers, we're not having anything like that.
Okay.
There'll be a porta potty onsite.
Okay. And the water for watering, it's going to come from where? Okay, and the water for watering, it's going to come from where?
So, again, back at the earth removal application, we have a water truck, we use calcium flakes to control dust, and we do have water at that house that we can use, meaning a hose. There's town water at that site.
Okay, so you potentially could be using water from the house?
We could, but we have a water truck, so theoretically, a water truck is going to be better than a garden hose.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so I guess we need a motion, I think.
I voice some of my concerns, I'm curious what you guys' are.
Well, I find a great amount of validity in the concerns that you had, and I think it sounded like more than, or at least half of them would require site plan review to be addressed. You made some good points about the review by our peer engineer. It does seem that there are some additional questions that need to be addressed. I was not aware of a lot of the things that you mentioned in the review as well, so they brought some more questions to my mind. But this is not the time to do a short-term site review, site plan review. So, I mean, basically, we can waive the request, we can grant the request to waive it, or we can deny the waiver request and have the site plan review.
Okay.
So I think we need a motion and a second, don't we?
Don't be, I haven't heard from you, Tanner.
I'm torn on this, because I, as a business owner who does a lot of business in town, I have a lot of respect for the amount of engineering time, resources that have gone into this project, and I know as the applicant, it's frustrating to go to so many meetings. And so there's a part of me that looks at that and says, if we can make it easier, we should, but at the same time, I also have a lot of respect for the abutters in this situation and look at the nature of the project, and, you know, we've required site plan approval for projects of smaller scope. So I don't necessarily feel that a waiver is required.
You don't feel that site plan review is appropriate?
Yeah, I don't feel that waiver is appropriate.
Appropriate.
I mean, I was concerned about the abutters concern, as well as it is a Zone 3 to our water supply and the environmental impacts, the ECE.
So I would make a motion to deny the waiver request.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So you're on the agenda?
Allegedly.
Sorry for the delay on that.
Okay, can I just ask the board a question? Could we get a bullet item of every one of your concerns?
Absolutely.
So, what's the date, April 13th?
Yes.
So April 13th?
I will send it to Adam, who can send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're still in the continuation of the stormwater hearing?
Thank you. Again, Frank McPartland from DeSharm and Dillis, the applicant's representative for the stormwater special permit for the earth removal at 1325 MAS AV. First, I'd like to walk through some of the changes that have been made to the plans since you last saw them. I believe we were last here four weeks ago. As we continued the last meeting.
Doesn't seem that one.
It may have been, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Oh, we continued.
Yeah. That's right, yes. So coming back to the plans, one of the largest changes that has happened at the request of the applicant is we have increased the disturbance buffer to the north and east properties from 20 feet, which is the zoning setback for a commercial property, to 50 feet. So this moved the top of the excavation 30 feet further from the property lines, and significantly changed the expected yield of the earth removal from the parcel. We're now expecting approximately 25,000 cubic yards, as opposed to the original 50. So that's been a significant change. Additional screening was provided along the north property line. The existing houses are about here, they start to come over the border of the plans. So we proposed a number of plantings along this buffer zone. Additionally, the plantings on this side, based on feedback from the abutter, have been changed from arborvitae to, excuse me, one second, from arborvitae to white pines Going back now to my response letter dated February 28th, to the planning board, the conservation commission, and MAS DEP. First, starting with the planning board comments, planning board requested the applicant consider filing the project with MEPA. We have done that, we originally filed on February 14th. They had some additional questions and looked for additional information, which required us to be refiled on March 2nd, which puts us, we're projected to be published in the environmental monitor on the 11th, with ENF comments due on the 31st. So that's the MEPA timeline that we're currently working with. Forward MAS DEP comments on the NOI filing to the planning board, this was done on the 19th. Forward applicable stormwater management section handbooks to the planning board, that was done on the 11th. Dimension the construction access, dimensions have been added to both the major, the long construction access coming off of MAS AV and the proposed temporary one utilizing the existing driveway shown on, and that's shown on Sheets C 2.0 and 3.0. Document compliance with the natural vegetation clause, 4.9.1E, Section 6. So I did forward the board figures to this to illustrate how these numbers work, but under existing conditions, there's 120,141 square feet of undisturbed area located within the Town of Lunenburg Zone 3 boundary. The site disturbance within this area is limited to 50% for an underlying non-residential use, and the underlying zone is commercial. Site grading had been adjusted to expand that buffer to the north and west of the property lines from 20 feet to 50 feet, and also to limit disturbance to the portion of the project within the Town of Lunenburg Zone 3 to 56,328 square feet. That works out to 46.3%, as shown on those figures. Part 6 states that we had requested a waiver on February 20th, which was just heard, and that we are in the process of preparing a site plan application, which has been submitted to the town. We were requested to move the stockpile and screening out of the MAS DEP Zone 2. The proposed topsoil stockpile and screening locations have been moved north out of the Massachusetts DEP Zone 2 and Town of Lunenburg Zone 3. So they were moved further into the site, out of those areas as requested. Regarding the, MAS DEP looked for additional clarifications on the 44% TSS pretreatment, which I provided the same information that had previously been provided to the board, documenting the approach, and that the 44% TSS removal would ultimately be achieved by providing deep stump hooded catch basins in the sediment for bays, with the deep stump hooded catch basins being constructed as part of a future project. So that, my understanding of that TSS removal is it always refers to impervious surfaces? So there isn't a TSS loading coming off grass, coming off wooded areas, which would be what would be left once the earth removal is complete.
Okay, so you're saying the pretreatment isn't required until you get to the impervious surface?
Correct, correct, because you're looking to intercept the total suspended solids from getting into, getting into your drainage basins and getting into ultimately the downstream, whether it's a wetland or a stream, or just being discharged offsite, because those suspended solids are what tends to carry hydrocarbons, they tend to, from parking lots, they tend to carry phosphorus and nitrogen.
One of my concerns is that if you read through the handbook, it talks about infiltration basins not being appropriate for coarse particulate. What kind of particulate do you expect from an earth removal operation?
So that would actually bring us to my response to, and it.
Sorry, I can ask my questions after.
Question two is the soil descriptions included on Sheet C 1.1 do not provide details necessary to confirm elevations of annual high groundwater at test pit locations. So the soil descriptions on Sheet C 1.1 have been updated to provide additional details, including color and presence of models, which were not found in the test pits. Soil color along the slope, which is a Paxton fine loamy sand, is 10.5Y52, and soil color along the vicinity of the stormwater management basin is 10.5Y53. Neither location has shown signs of soil modeling. We advanced additional confirmatory test pits on February 21st. Two pits were excavated on the slope and were consistent with previous findings with regard to texture, class, color, and models. And then two additional pits were done within the stormwater management basin, again, consistent with previous testing for soil class and color. We did show actual groundwater at approximately 54 inches below grade, which is approximately elevation 395.5. That elevation is consistent with the elevation of downgradient wetland areas. So there's a fairly level water table down at the bottom of the site. The inverted of the proposed stormwater management area is 400, providing approximately 48 inches of separation between the groundwater and the inverted of the stormwater management area. So we didn't hit any sort of modeling out there. I think what we saw in February was true groundwater in that location.
So there was no soil modeling?
There was no soil modeling, no. Comment three, the O&M plan should contain instructions that the locations of the stormwater basin should be protected during construction and not used as locations for construction phase sedimentation basins. Since material above the groundwater table will be removed, thereby increasing the vulnerability of the aquifer, the applicant should create and implement a spill response plan, and elevation should be provided for the four bay berms. So the O&M manual itself resubmitted to the town and the DEP included in the MEPA was revised to instruct the applicant to protect the stormwater management basin during construction and not to use it as a construction phase sediment basin. The erosion control plan and details have been revised to direct the applicant to construct temporary sediment basins upslope of the proposed basin. So what I did was designate an area above the 410 contour, above the soil erosion fencing at the top of the basin, as an area for the applicant to construct said sediment basins on and as needed basis. He's previously said that he would be clearing approximately 20,000 square feet of area at a given time. Clearing, removing, stabilizing, and then moving on. The erosion control plan and notes direct the applicant that as he's doing that, to construct appropriately sized sediment basins, that sizing is on, the detail sheet telling him the dimensions of the bottom contour and the top contour. And then those sediment basins will catch any of the sediment laid in runoff before it gets into the stormwater basin. So whatever ends up going into the stormwater basin would have had a time to sit and settle out before it washes into.
So that's your pretreatment prior to the infiltration?
This would be, it's kind of a construction phase pretreatment. It's not really recognized in the BNP manual, but it's almost a four bay before the four bays.
Right, but that's going to remove a lot of the particulate that I just asked you.
Yes, it will, which is why I was deferring my answer.
Yes.
And the spill response plan was added to the operations and maintenance manual per their request, and the elevations were called out on the four bay berms. They were being shown tied into certain contours, but I added the elevations just for clarity. Finally, a potential vernal pool is located northwest of the project. The applicant should verify that the proposed work will not adversely impact the hydrology of the vernal pool, of the potential vernal pool. This has been discussed at the conservation commission, and they feel that we are not impacting the potential vernal pool through this construction. The hydrology of the potential vernal pool located in the west of the project will not be adversely impacted by the proposed work. The stormwater basin will maintain groundwater levels tributary to the potential vernal pool through groundwater recharge. The potential basin has been set approximately four feet above the surface elevation of the potential vernal pool itself. I did look at providing a direct discharge from the basin to the vernal pool, but that would have involved significant disturbances of the 30-foot, Town of Lunenburg, no build buffer, and I thought it was a better approach to not dig up those areas, and the conservation commission agreed with me on that item. And then the last item that I skipped over was just an update based on town of the conservation commission, just asking that the O&M manual responsible party section be updated to note that the current landover is responsible for all upkeep, maintenance, and reporting on the constructed stormwater management facilities. And during the course of our initial discussion at the commission, they asked that the O&M manual be included in the order of conditions itself, as something that's tacked on at the end of it, so it always goes with the property.
Thank you.
Just to run through my questions, specifically for stormwater again, I'd like to know what the infiltration rate is. I'd like to understand, per the handbook, it says that one monitoring well has to be installed on the basin floor per every 5,000 square feet of basin, so I'm wondering why you're not proposing that. You just indicated you did two boreings within the basin. A minimum of three is required per the handbook.
Did two additional?
You did the slope, you did the slope, but did you do three within the basin? Well, I was thinking there were three, but that's why I was saying, I was surprised when you said two. I'm looking at the.
Two additional? Two additional.
Okay, so there's three total in the basin?
Correct, yes. Yeah, I did two additional in the basin and two additional on the slope.
On the slope, right, okay. Because I thought that, I highlighted three, so I was surprised when you said two. The other question that I have is the depth of the borings, because per this document that you sent me, DEP requires that borings be at least 20 feet deep or extend to the depth of the limiting layer. And from all the notes that I saw, there was no limiting layer. So I'm questioning the depth of those borings. The other question that I have is the location of the abutting septic system, specifically the closest to butter, where it is to the end of that infiltration basin. If you look at that endpoint, where is it in regards to that endpoint? Yeah, that's what I'd like to know, and I'd like to have it on the plan.
We'll prepare a figure documenting that.
And I think that's all I had on the basin. But again, my concerns are why these, why this stuff wasn't picked up by our engineer. When we received the revised plans, this data was included, but I would question why he didn't pick up on that.
If you get that over to me, I can inquire.
Yep.
So it's very difficult to actually confirm that you did testing within basin locations because you don't show them on the same sheet.
Yeah, that's
I can clear that up for you, yes.
Don't line up. But that would be great.
Yeah, if you could overlay the basin on the plan or the test pits.
You mentioned that you made significant changes to the area that's being disturbed?
Yes.
But the stormwater basin is the same?
Correct.
So essentially, you've overbuilt the basin?
The stormwater basin will be overbuilt for how the site is left stabilized once the earth removal is done.
Okay.
Well, it's definitely overbuilt because it's prepared for 70,000 plus square feet of
So you're, so Phase 2 is also being reduced?
Phase 2 has not been reduced, it hasn't been planned yet.
Okay, but so additional, would additional earth removal be required for Phase 2, depending on what Phase 2 is?
Potentially.
You don't know, because you don't know what Phase 2 is? Yeah, okay.
Can you tell us the square footage of the area that will be left once?
Approximately, I would have to give you a, would be an approximate number, I believe I have that in the MEPA.
It doesn't have to be precise. I mean, we were working off of 77,000.
It was 70, yeah. It's probably approximately 50. 77,000 is actually less than what the theoretical maximum impervious could be on this site.
That's, you said that's less than
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so when accounting for the 50% of the Zone 3 buffer, and then the allowable percentage of impervious coverage for being in a zone commercial, I want to say it could be approximately 160,000 square feet of impervious, and we were more or less limited, oh wait. Yeah, it could be approximately 167,000 square feet of impervious, and the basin itself is designed for 77,800, so.
Do we have that plan where you show the sediment four bays?
Yes.
We do?
That was in the latest revision, should be dated February 28th.
We have March 2nd.
Is that one?
Received.
The revision date is here.
Oh, oh, yep.
Oh, yep, now I see it, okay.
Adam, do we still owe you full-size plans? I know we had a printer issue.
No, I think you brought them the day after you had your printer issue. I'll confirm, but I'm pretty sure that they came right back.
Did you find it?
Mm-hmm.
And then the next page has a detail of how that, a section of how that sedimentation basin would be laid out. And the intent is that it would tie into the proposed manhole that's at the middle of the basin for de-watering purposes? So that water wouldn't be spilling over and potentially causing erosion?
Thank you for labeling the length of the gravel access.
You're welcome.
So we need the test pits overlaid on the basin. Need to know about the monitoring well requirement, the infiltration rate, and the location of the abutting septic system.
Yes.
I think that covers it. Did you have any more concerns?
No, I think that's most of it.
Okay. We are getting there.
So do we continue the stormwater permit, or now that we've determined we're going to do a site plan review, do we, is it a separate permit, or does it come under one?
There are two separate permits.
Okay, so we could continue the stormwater permit, or should we continue it to the same date as the site plan? I'm just trying to figure out what makes the
That's up to the applicant, really, to determine when they would like to continue that to.
Okay.
We're two weeks out from the next meeting.
Yeah.
We're five weeks out from the 13th.
Yeah, I'd like to continue the stormwater to the next planning board hearing.
Adam, I'll send this to you tomorrow.
Okay.
So you can forward it to Dan.
Yep, and I'll send it over to Frank. Thank you.
And if you can copy Dan on it, too.
So we need a
I would make a motion to continue the stormwater hearing for 13/25 Mass Ave to March 23rd.
At 6:35?
At 6:35.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we have a public forum. I apologize to everybody that was waiting for the earth removal public forum or the removal from chapter. It's unfortunate that we have hearings scheduled before the public gets to do their thing. I know you don't really enjoy sitting there, listening to it. So we, our next item is a public forum on earth removal, discussion on the bylaws, rules, and regulations.
So the presentation will be up on the screen to the right of the stage. It's a relatively short presentation. If you would put that up, please, Emily.
I kind of want to see it, I'm going to go down here so I can see it.
You know what all of it is, but if you want to go sit, that's fine. That's fine. So we're here to talk about proposed changes to Lunenburg's earth removal bylaw in the general bylaws of the town, Chapter 140 of the Code of Lunenburg. Reasons for changing, the bylaw has a very low threshold required for permitting earth removal. This bylaw looks at increasing it to narrow the amount of people who would qualify for a permit. The language of the bylaw is somewhat limited and ambiguous. Oh, next slide, please. The language of the bylaw is somewhat ambiguous regarding what's required to be submitted, what the approval criteria are. This results in perhaps inconsistencies over years and different boards permitting earth removal. Updating the bylaw would give some consistency to both those seeking and those approving earth removal permits. The permitting authority is generally better suited with the planning board or another land use board, as they work with plans and this type of stuff on a regular basis, in addition to issuing other permits that those doing earth removal might need. This would allow for streamlined permitting for those wishing to do earth removal. And finally, that last point is just echoed in the final bullet. So what's the difference between the two bylaws is I'm sure what most people are going to be wondering. So on the left, we have what the existing bylaw has, and on the right, we have what the proposed bylaw is. And this is the bare bones, but currently, if you remove 10 cubic yards of earth, you're required to get an earth removal permit per the bylaw. There are some exemptions, and we'll get to those in a little bit. The proposed bylaw would raise that to 1,500 cubic yards. So a true process where someone's actually removing a significant amount of earth. The current permitting body is the Board of Selectmen. The proposed permitting body would be the planning board. The exemptions in the existing bylaw are for subdivision roads, building permits, and septic systems only. Those carry forward to the new bylaw, and they add in driveway permits, as some people will sometimes put a driveway in and not include a building on the lot, so there could be significant earth removal included in that. And there are no current regulations on earth removal operations, on filing, what's required. It's sort of up to each individual case, and that can lead to, again, inconsistencies. And the new bylaw provides for the ability for the planning board to create regulations, which they've done in a draft form, that if this bylaw were to pass, they would be looking to adopt through a public hearing that's advertised and noticed in the local paper seven, 14 days ahead of time, and would be open to the public to come and comment on. Next slide, please. So the threshold increase. Currently, it's 10 cubic yards, which is generally less than one triaxle. This is a threshold that isn't currently enforced. The Board of Selectmen issues earth removal permits when people ask, but no one is driving around looking for trucks of dirt leaving sites to pull in and say, hey, do you have an earth removal permit? So what we would be looking to do is remove the low volume, because it's really hard to tell what earth is coming from or being put in. Raise it up to a larger quantity that would be something that would be more consistent, easier to police, and would capture less of the small volume removals that perhaps don't necessarily need an earth removal permit, because they happen over a short period of time. Permitting granting authority, transferring the permitting granting authority from the Board of Selectmen to the planning board takes one more thing off the plate of the Board of Selectmen. They have plenty of other omnibus issues to discuss and look at throughout town. The planning board looks at site-specific issues on a regular basis. Most earth removal permits are going to, at some point, require a stormwater permit, so being able to do both of those hearings in, both those permits in a single hearing would streamline it for the applicant, give the ability for all of the questions and concerns to be handled together. And the planning board, again, has experience dealing with reading plans, approving plans, working through the bylaw on mitigation measures. Next slide, please. So exemptions. The current exemptions are pulled forward to the new bylaw with the addition of the driveway permit, as earlier stated. These exemptions aren't absolute. There are limiting factors on the exemptions, such as ensuring that you're not crossing more than three lots. If you have three lots together and you're removing less than 1,500 cubic yards, you would be exempt. If you are doing so across 10 lots, then together in order to prepare, it would, there, I'm sorry, that's, I misstated that. There are, the exemption allows for anything less than 1,500. It allows for septic systems and building permits, removal to go with that. If you're crossing multiple lots in larger quantities, then you're required to get a permit. And it allows for, if there's a violation of the standards of the bylaw, the planning board can require a permit. And again, this goes back to the consistency. There's a documented, specific standard in the bylaw as to how and when earth removal permits are required, and the exemptions would fall within that. And finally, the allowance for regulations is an update. Currently, there, next slide, please. There are no regulations in the existing bylaw. With the new bylaw, the planning board would have the ability to create and approve regulations by public hearing. So this is done in the open with the ability for public comment. The planning board does have a set of draft regulations which are on the table. They're also posted to the town website, that they have currently drafted, that should this pass, they would adopt. Again, these include limit of work hours within residential areas. They include the standards for applying and what would be required for earth removal operations to apply, and how, and when earth removal operations would operate. And again, these can be changed from time to time to address issues of parts of the regulations that aren't working, or to address other aspects of earth removal that maybe weren't considered. Again, any change or alteration would be through a public hearing process and would be advertised in the local paper.
All right. Adam, could you discuss native earth and
I can.
Clarifications in terms of processing and
So the intent of the bylaw, and Tanner and I were discussing this before the meeting, in the bylaw, there's a definition of earth. And I think Tanner's proposal that it would be up to the board to make this alteration would be adding the word native, so it would read, "This term shall include soil, loam, sand, gravel, clay, peat, rock, or other native earth material in solid form." And what Tanner's talking about is an operation such as powell, stone, and gravel, where they're bringing material in on a truck, they're processing it into smaller gravel or screening loam. That's not earth removal, because they're bringing a product in, they're processing it on-site, and they're selling the processed material off. Keating would be the same. The plant that they have on the corner of Reservoir Road and Lemmon Street Shirley Road is an industrial facility. It's a processing facility, it's not earth removal. Now, across the street where they have the pit, that is earth removal, because they're taking native material out of the ground. So the idea behind this is when material is being removed from the ground, the native material, not stuff that was brought in and to be shipped out or used otherwise. We have several greenhouses and landscaping businesses in town that bring in yards and yards of mulch and loam, and anything that you've brought in like that is not native material. That's part of, that's a commodity that you're selling or something that you're processing. So again, it would be up to the board to add native as part of the definition of earth, but I think that that's been the intent of the discussion throughout this process.
So how do we add that? Can we do that now?
We can just do that now, yeah.
I would make a motion that we add the word native to the definition of earth.
I have some discussion points. In the conversation before Paula showed up while it was still going on, I heard that you referenced an existing 50,000, 50 cubic yard pile of gravel on a lot that was purchased?
Well, the point of the discussion was for anybody that's moving any sort of material around town, as long as it's not native material. So if you're a contractor, and you, by habit, you do septic systems, or you build houses, or even people that do residential developments, when they're hauling material out
But, I mean, it would still be covered under something else, like a contractor's license or something, wouldn't it? I mean, because...
Well, presumably, whatever they're doing is most likely going through a permit process. If they're building a house, they're getting a building permit. If they're doing a septic system, they're getting a permit for the septic system. If they're working in a wetlands, they're going through conservation. The thought process being that's behind it is you don't want to put people in a situation where, if you're running a retail outlet and you're bringing in bark mulch, or loom, or sand, or stone, or anything, that's not
That's not earth removal.
That's not affecting the grade of the existing property. You're not, your depth of groundwater isn't a concern. You're simply bringing material in and then moving it back out, just like if you were building picnic tables, you're bringing two-by-fours in and you're moving...
It's a retail operation versus an earth removal excavation operation.
But I guess my concern was that it still may have the same effects on some other things, like the roads and the neighbors and the dust and the...
But I think that's a retail operation. I mean, this regulation is...
If it is a retail, then yes, but...
Well, I guess I would question how it would not be. I mean, if you're...
Well, it'd be a retail operation, or a contractor's yard, or a new home being built.
Right, which a contractor's yard is still of some sort of service.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's, that it covers review for the concern of the roads, because they are a major investment of the town. Okay. So, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that was to add native to the definition of earth. Very good. All right, this is a public forum. Who's got something to say? Anybody? Please. There you go.
I have to say where I'm from. Is this like a select...
Please.
Mark Bush, 20 Buttonwood Place. I'm curious about your significant, your earth removal that involves less than 1,500 cubic yards. And you said this is, you know, intended for significant operations. I think that 1,500 cubic yards is very low, and I think you could affect a lot of residents in town that want to do anything for their homes. And, you know, you talked about some of the guidelines, and that's where I really want to talk about the residents. The cost of the permit, the, you know, the engineer that they would have to hire, I think you'd really strap a lot of people in town if there's something that they would want to do with their property with that 1,500 cubic yards. We're talking about Mr. Proctor's development. He's, what, 50,000 cubic yards or greater? To me, that's significant. 1,500 cubic yards, I think, is a low threshold.
So, just to be clear, right now, it's 10?
I understand that the policy now is nonenforceable, and it doesn't make any sense. But the idea is you're trying to make something that makes sense here, and I think 1,500 yards is...
So, just what would you think is a reasonable cubic yards?
I would say somewhere around five.
5,000?
5,000. Because if somebody had a piece of property, and they wanted to increase the size of that property, and they had a good amount of material that they wanted to have taken out of there, and it would probably go over a period of time, I would think. But, you know, most, when you're looking at what this is intended to do, we're talking about tens of thousands of yards of material, you know, and I can understand the impact that would have.
And just to be clear, this is the second-highest total or threshold that I've seen of an earth removal bylaw. 2,000 is the highest I've seen.
Okay.
And it's per calendar year. So, I understand if someone's moving 5,000 cubic yards, that, but in one year, that's significant. If they...
Maybe they're not doing it in one year, but the ability to do 2,500 or 3,000 in a calendar year, should, you know, 1,500 yards can be moved in a couple days.
But we've, I mean, we, as Adam said, we have surveyed other towns to see what they have, and 1,500 is actually high in comparison to other municipalities. Most are between 500 and 1,000.
Yeah, 250 and 1,000 is...
Right. So, we actually went higher than most communities?
I still feel it's low.
How many trucks does that equate to? I always look at it by trucks.
It all depends on the size of the truck. I mean, you're talking three trailer dumps, so...
Well, if we did triaxle, which...
A triaxle, which is...
Yeah, okay, so...
We're trying to figure out 1,500 or 5,000?
5,000.
5,000.
Well, can you do the comparison, 1,500 versus 5,000?
200.
200 per truck?
Yep.
25 per truck.
25 yards per truck.
Okay, 25 yards per truck.
That's a triaxle?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, 200 trucks?
Yeah, for 5,000.
365 days a year. I leave my driveway a couple times a year. I could easily do that if I owned a triaxle. Just trying to make sense of it, that's all. And then, while we're talking about the period of the time of, they would have, it's not really clear on, if I got a permit on June 1st, would I have to reapply on June 30th?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that maybe the permit timeframe needs to be a little longer. I know if I go to conservation and get an approval, it's three years. Building permits, two years, I believe?
It has to be, I think it has to start within six months.
Six months? Every six months, if you don't start?
If you don't start.
It has to be started within six months.
But I just think that that's, you know, if I got a permit on June 1st, now you're going to tell me I got to come back and reapply on June 30th?
No, earth removal permits right now, I think, are calendar year, correct?
They're September 1 to August 31.
Yeah. So, they have a start and an end. And so, if you apply in the middle right now, you still need to come back on the first date, and the same thing with alcohol licenses.
Yeah, I mean, if you applied, if you got issued on August 1st, you'd be back in front of them at the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah. So, that doesn't change.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you have a staggered permit process.
The thought process being for somebody that holds multiple permits, they all renew at the same time, so you come in, you get everything done.
Right. And for ease of operation, you're doing all of the permits at one time.
And just for...
Now, it might be possible to pro-rate that. I mean, we haven't talked about that, the permit fee.
I don't know how you could build the language in so that you could make the first permit, like, up to 18 months long, or something like that, so if they apply...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you have something? No. I just, it's pretty detailed on what is going to be required, and then it says at the end that you can waive it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that should be a little more loose to begin with. A lot of these things, I mean, I've seen the engineer come here a few times for a recent project, and, you know, some things are new, some things are recurring, but it seems like, you know, you guys are doing your due diligence to look at everything that needs to be looked at.
To what specifically?
I don't know on some of the stuff, some, just from my experience and what I look at is under the regulations. You're spelling out exactly the type of tree, the size of tree, and how close you're going to put it, and then saying, "Well, if it's not applicable, we'll waive it." You know, all of 5.2, I didn't agree with.
So, the screening requirements?
You know, making it required versus, you know, I think most applicants will do what is asked of them, that I don't think you need to be that specific, and this has to happen. And then, if, you know, if you come to us and say, you know, give us a good case, well, we could waive it. It just seems like you're...
Well, but if we look at 5.2, there's three components to it. There's the retention of existing vegetation and the required setback. So, you do that. If the Board feels that that's inadequate, they can require a chain link fence. Now, that can be a construction fence, where it's not a permanent fixture. And if you choose to not do that, then 5.2.3, you can do 5.2.3 instead of, you're not required to do that, you may be required to put the construction fence in.
I've read it a few times, and it does get pretty confusing.
So, we can, I mean, we can look at clarifying that.
That comes back to my 1,500 cubic yards being kind of a low number for earth removal, because the general public's is going to have to come in here and try to go through this process. And once it's triggered, we're talking of, you know, up to tens of thousands of dollars that a homeowner's going to spend to remove over 1,500 cubic yards of material out of their yard, which is way too much to put on the residents. I understand the intention and what you're trying to do here.
Sure.
But I don't want it to be a burden on the residents. We have two earth removal permits in town?
Well, we have two earth removal
Holdies holders.
Permit holders.
Okay.
We have multiple permits under one holder.
Yeah, keating.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, two. Are you, three? Well, maybe, maybe four. No, that's under...
The water department has...
It's exempt. They had to get one, but it's exempt. So, I mean, it's a lot to try to digest for three permits in the town, and it seems like it's trying to cover a lot. I understand you're trying to cover your bases, but I think that we need to loosen the grasp a little bit. And the only other comment I had is I'm kind of stepping back to earlier today, there was a site plan waiver. What's a site plan approval? Can somebody walk me through that real quick?
It's a permit that is codified in the zoning bylaw for the final use of a site and design of that site to meet certain standards for safety and environmental protection.
Okay. And I know that Ms. Bertram had a lot of questions about stormwater that came after the vote for the waiver. And it seemed, and I understand that some of the Board members, I understood that there were some questions and concerns, and it seemed like they were answered after. And it seemed like the applicant doesn't have a final idea of what he wants to do with this. So, making him go through that with the fact that they're looking at all the stormwater and everything else that they need to do, I don't agree with the fact that you didn't waive the request for the site plan, because there's no final. And I don't understand how you could do one if you don't know what the final is going to be.
Well, it was the determination of the building inspector that earth removal is a listed use in our use table, and the property was currently residential. So, the transfer to earth removal is a change in use, which, under Section 8.4, which is site plan approval by law, any change in use requires site plan approval. In instances in the past, reuse of existing buildings, the coffee roaster down on Mass Ave, the pet store that took over at Fun Place Rentals are changes in use, because what was there before is a different use per zoning. The Board has issued waivers on those, because they felt that the site was adequately appointed to handle the new use as it was for the previous use. And that's what the waiver request from DeSharm and Dillis was attempting to address. The Board, as I heard it, felt that the changes were greater than they were comfortable approving for that type of transition.
So, a transition from an open grass field to a change in grade to an open grass field?
I'm not making a value judgment. I'm trying to, I'm trying to express what I heard from the hearing.
I just wanted to make that known. I didn't agree with that decision, because it's not a change of use in my mind. Yes, you're taking the earth out of it, but the use of the property at the end is still the same until there's a final plan for something to be built there, correct? The change in use is no different. He's just going to take, he's going to take the gravel out, and then he's going to put grass back in.
Right.
So, an open field to an open field.
Sure.
Well, I got to respond to that. A change in use from a residential property to a commercial enterprise for earth removal for a period of one to three years is very different than an operation that's going to take place over course of a month, and you're going to be in and out, and you're going to take the dirt out, and it's a one-to-three-year commercial operation with a screening operation on-site is very different than a residential use, in my opinion. And has much more impact to abutting properties than a grass field.
I understand that, and I understand that you're making provisions for all of that through, you know, reviewing their stormwater plans.
No, we can't make, that's the problem.
And while I've seen, I've watched the meetings, it's dust control, and you brought up valid points tonight. Where is everybody going to go to the bathroom? Where's the water going to come from?
But those aren't, we can't ask those questions under stormwater. That's the problem.
I understand, but you're asking them from the Planning Board. You asked them tonight.
But we cannot have any input or any real interaction on those issues, except under site plan. Under a stormwater permit, we can only talk about stormwater, which I have done. But there are other questions relative to a site plan that are different than stormwater.
Okay. It just seems that you said you couldn't ask those questions, but you asked the questions, and the applicant answered them.
We cannot put restrictions on them.
Right.
We cannot condition a stormwater permit with those conditions. We can condition a site plan permit with those conditions.
And again, you get to the point, and I saw the hesitation in the vote tonight. I understand that, you know, you have Board members that are businessmen. I'm a businessman in town, and, you know, it becomes burdensome to do, to have to jump through, I guess, for lack of a better term, so many hoops to get to an end goal. You know, I know I've watched a few meetings where the applicants come to. I've watched several meetings on several boards where it's, you know, you gain an inch, and you get thrown back three or four. And then, you got to keep gaining that inch until you really have to be persistent in trying to meet all those goals. And I understand that the job of this Board, but also consideration of the people that, you know, and the projects that they're doing, you know, I would hope that that would be a future consideration. So, that's all I have. If you don't have any questions, me or anything.
Thank you. I think, and you're welcome to step back up after you hear more comments, but I think we'd like, I think there's more people that'd like to speak.
Okay.
Is there any more public besides the previous applicant that wants to say something?
Well, I think he's talking about earth removal.
I'm Dan Proctor, 1529 Mass Ave. I'm just, I want to ask a couple of questions about the earth removal. Can you just explain to me how the renewal process is going to happen? In other words, you just ask for an application, pay the $100, it gets reviewed, how is that working?
Well, currently, the, if this were to pass at town meeting in May, then it gets sent to the Attorney General. They have 90 days to review and reply, and then we have to post for 90 days before it becomes a legal document. So, for existing earth removal permit holders, there would be one more round of renewals through the Board of Selectmen. And then, at the time for the next renewal, which would be July 1st of the following year, you would apply per this bylaw.
And I would assume you'd get a letter saying, you know, "Here's the application, and do you want to renew," similar to what happens now?
Okay. And the building inspector goes out and does an inspection at that point? Is that how it would work?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's basically just a renewal? In other words, it's not another public meeting or anything?
Right.
Well, the renewal is done at a public meeting.
It is.
Well, as it is with the Selectmen currently.
But it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
It's just a meeting. Yeah.
And if you hold the permit currently, those standards carry forward. In other words, if you have a, currently hold an earth removal permit, when you come up for renewal, you don't have to redesign your whole site. That permit continues under its current condition. So, whatever those conditions are, they carry forward. So, you can essentially continue the operation as you've been permitted in the past.
Okay.
Is that correct, Adam?
As long as it's renewed, 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 but if it's discontinued, it would have to be reapplied for, I think.
Adam, is that correct?
I'm, well, you would continue operating under your existing permit, and then all permitting switches over to the new bylaw.
But then what happens? Do they have to comply with the new bylaw, or can they operate under their existing plan?
Well, in theory, the bylaw shouldn't change the way that they operate.
Right. But I guess what I'm asking is on the renewal...
Yes, they become subject to the new bylaw.
They do become subject to the new bylaw.
Because, because there's no, because with general... Well, you would continue operating under your existing permit, and then all permitting switches over to the new bylaw.
But, then what happens? Do they have to comply with the new bylaw, or can they operate under their existing plan?
Well, in theory, the bylaw shouldn't change the way that they operate.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking is on the renewal-
Yes, they become subject to the new bylaw.
They do become subject to the new bylaw.
Because, because there's no, because with general bylaws, there is no grandfathering, as there is with zoning bylaws. So, if you're, if you change a zoning bylaw, where you are when that zoning bylaw changes, you continue to hold that going forward. With general bylaws, if we didn't have that provision for the continuation under the Board of Selectmen's permit, then they would be subject to the bylaw upon it becoming legal. So, the planning board could, in their approval of renewals, go to their regulations and say, "We're going to waive the portions of this regulation that conflict with the permit that existing permit holders have," and allow them to operate in that manner.
Right, because I'm looking at this, and, you know, once Mr. Proctor finishes this process and can execute his permit, this is saying he's got to notify abutters within 300 feet, he's got to do a whole site plan. I don't want to make him go through that. I mean, I don't want to have gone through this and then make him go through that.
Vaughn, I just reread 140-5A, which covers the existing operations. An existing operation that has been issued a permit by the Board of Selectmen under the earth removal bylaw that was in effect prior to the effective date of this bylaw may continue to operate according to the terms of such permit, which shall hereafter be enforceable by the PGA pursuant to this article. So, it sounds like they can run out their term, but then they-
That's correct. At the end of their, at the end of their term, they would be subject to the new bylaw. So, if this were to pass, we would be notifying all permit holders that this is the new bylaw, you have this renewal, and then you have until the end of that to come back and reapply under the existing bylaw.
And without reviewing all the existing earth removal permits that are out there, my only thought along those lines is I think certain aspects of this are subject to trouble for people in terms of like-
Well, all of the existing permit holders have received copies of these, and have reviewed them. One standing in front of us, and the other I've spoken with personally, and they said, "We think it looks fine, we're okay with it, we had some questions about this, this or that," and most of it related to the quarry aspect of it. And, as we talked about when we were writing the regulations, you have the ability to waive portions of it, the quarry exists, and again, the board has looked at existing operations and said, "We understand that these things exist and that they're happening, and you have the ability to ease them into the regulations, or to waive portions of the regulations, or otherwise."
I just feel like we should honor the permit that people have. Like, for example, the 50-foot setback from the property line. If any of the permits out there have gone beyond the 50 feet, so-
All of those permits have over 100-foot setback, at Keating and Mr. Proctor's permit that he's dealing with the board right now, he's voluntarily, well, somewhat voluntarily exercised a 50-foot setback on his proposal, so.
So, are we going to go around and waive everybody's screening requirements? I just, I feel like the people that hold the permit now shouldn't be held hostage by anything in the bylaw. And I fully support the bylaw the way it is, and understand the intent behind it, but I know if I was in the-
I don't know that there's a legal mechanism to write the bylaw to allow for you to freeze existing regulations going forward after a change of a general bylaw.
Okay. Even if we just took the language out that says "hereafter"?
I think you could do it, I think you run into a potential challenge in the future should this pass, and you have two permit holders who are operating under this one set of rules, third person comes into town and you hit them with this, and, you know, they're talking with Dan over coffee, and he's like, "Oh, well, I do this over there," and they come back and they're like, "Wait a minute, you told me I have to do this other thing." And, then you're not, it eliminates the consistency and equal playing field. From the screening perspective, I know Keating's has natural vegetation within all of their setback. I think that it looks scary, and it looks like there's a lot of things that you waive, I don't think that there really is. The separation from groundwater is in most of the current permits, I think it might be four feet instead of six feet. But, I mean, again, those are things that you can work with. And if it is, if it does pose a problem, you have the ability to alter your regs.
So, for example, I think this new plan is four feet. So, well, no, I'm talking about the stormwater, nevermind. Well, actually, so you're saying the excavation has to have a six-foot separation?
If I remember correctly, that's what the board had said in their regs. Yeah. Six feet above seasonal.
Do you know if yours will be there?
So, I guess that's the question, and I'm still looking for that answer. So, are you saying that in a year, in, so, August of-
2021.
2021, I have to come back to the board, the whole set of plans? Now, I have to elevate my yacht up to six foot groundwater off of it?
I've got a huge issue with that, because now it's four, and he's complying with the four.
Right.
Then we can change the regs to four, or-
There's not like a grandfather clause or something?
Well, that's what Tana's asking.
Or you can, again, in instances of individuals who have existing permits, you can waive the six and leave it at four.
Where's the waiver section?
It's in the regulations, it's Section 9 of the regulations.
But, that puts the permit holder at a real disadvantage. I mean, we could waive it, or we might not waive it.
Well, that's the goal, is to make it as black and white as possible, but unfortunately, government doesn't always work that way.
So, I have to say, I now have concerns about the six feet, because existing permit holders are at four feet, they can't, we're not going to make them put earth back.
Well, the same would apply to the buffer, because the new bylaw is 50 feet. I think, where'd the 20 feet come from? That's an offset.
That's a zoning offset, yeah.
That's a use offset. So, theoretically, someone, well-
Well, again, all the permits are 50 feet or greater.
Yeah.
So, currently, it's 50 feet? Currently, it's 50 feet?
No, currently, all the people who have earth removal permits are either meeting or proposing to meet 50 feet or greater of natural buffering.
So, the real issue would be the offset to groundwater?
The groundwater seems to be the sticking point.
And screening, theoretically.
I can't, well, all of the Keating parcels have, again, 100 and 250-foot setbacks, and they all have at least 25 feet of natural vegetation there.
One other quick question. So, is it safe to assume that any earth removal permit is going to kick in the change of use, and then you would be doing site development plan review?
That would be the determination that the building inspector has made.
No, I'm not talking about my project.
No, no, I, one, one-
So, if you have an earth removal permit in a residential area-
Correct.
He's saying, even though it's a residential area, and some lady has a hill in front of her house that has 1,501 yards that she wants to take out, she has to go through site plan review because she's changing the use, and even though the hill's gone and she's going to put a swimming pool there, it's now considered commercial?
Well, if she's putting a swimming pool, she pulls a building permit.
That's a bad example. She wants to put in a swing set that's, you know, five by five, that her husband's going to assemble without a building permit. You see the point I'm making? So, are we saying that every earth removal permit is now going to be a change of use because it's considered commercial? I guess that's my question.
That's, it's not, it's considered a use in the use table. So, if it were removed from the use table, then that change of use argument would potentially not be there for the building inspector to review.
Okay.
So, earth removal is included in the use table, therefore, it is a use. Therefore, exercising that becomes a change of use unless it was earth removal before.
So, basically, any earth removal permit's going to require a development plan review?
Yes.
I mean, that's the, yes or no?
Well, it can be waived.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Bob Proctor, 99 Pleasant Street. So, I just have a couple of questions on the offsets. You have 100 feet from a public way, you have 50 feet from a lot line. So, that's all well and good if, you know, you guys keep quoting, you keep bringing up Keating's. It's like, well, all these projects here are in the Keating scope. It's a residential area, it's a place where, you know, somebody calls up and they want to, like they said, level their lot. So, we're going to take out 1,600 yards, you want an earth removal permit. Well, now, we can't go 100 feet from the road, we can't go within 50 feet of the lot line. We're digging, you know, a 15-foot bank and at a one-to-one slope on a guy that's got a 200 by 200-foot lot. Now, you know, you've got about a 20 by 20 area that you technically can dig to remove the earth. You know, I know it says you want to waive each individual circumstances, but, you know, if every time you look at the way you have it drafted now, we're going to be up here every other day trying to get a meeting so that you guys can say, "Oh, we'll waive it, we'll waive it." But, you know, that takes time, that takes a lot of energy, that, I mean, I understand the purpose of what you're trying to do, but I think it has to go back and get reevaluated.
So, I would ask, how often do you run into this?
Not that often, but often enough that we have concerns. I mean, I'm not the only one that has the concerns.
But, you just said you'd be up here every other week, so I guess I would question, I mean, I've lived in town for-
So, maybe six times a year?
Okay, because, I mean, I've lived in town for 35 years, and I, I mean, and I haven't seen neighbors redoing their yachts unless it was a building permit, and I did see some pretty drastic changes with building permits. But, those would be exempted. So, I guess my question would be, how often do people come in and want to take 1,500 cubic yards of loam out of their property?
Well, it's not loam, it could be anything.
Or anything, but how often does that come up? Unless it's related to a building permit, a septic system, a driveway?
It comes up. I mean, does it come up often? It may not come up for two years, it may come up three or four times a year. So, I'm just trying to circumvent the meetings as much as possible, because, you know, you're up here trying to make a decision, and it takes four hours to make, you know, one decision. And, you know, now you get a disgruntled neighbor that says, "Oh, I don't like, you know, Jim because, whatever reason," and now we're going to 50 feet from the lot line to try, you know, somebody's trying to deal with getting a better yacht, and, you know, you're saying he can't go to his own lot line.
But, the other side of that is, you're talking about drastically changing topography.
But, it's not your topography that you're changing.
I'm sorry?
It's, you know, it's not your topography that you're changing. I understand you're trying to look out for, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods, and obviously, I mean, how many neighborhoods, and I'm not saying they're not all, you know, perfect, but, you know, for the most part, everybody's friendly and neighborly, so why are you going to regulate how far you can go to that lot line?
Because if you've, and I'll tell you, I mean, you've got people going up for some period of time, say it's a year, with tractors right up to your lot line, without any regulation on hours of operation, or any, you know, and you've got trucks, you've got 60 trucks, because 1,500 cubic yards is 60 trucks. You've got 60 trucks coming in and out of your property, next door to me, for some unqualified period of time, removing the earth right up to my lot line. That's a problem for me.
So, first of all, Powell doesn't even have 60 trucks, so it's going to take you quite a while to get the material out at two or three trucks a day.
Okay. Well, that's the problem, Bob.
Right. But, what I'm trying to get to is, the 50 feet is too much. I'm saying, you know, I'm not saying you have to go right up to the guy's lot line, but five, 10 feet. What's the matter with 10 feet?
Our zoning, you can't put a building within 15 feet.
I'm not talking about a building, I'm just talking about leveling my yard.
But, you can excavate, well, and I got to, I have to argue that I think five, 10 feet is too close. If you can't put a structure within 15 feet of the lot line on your own property, you shouldn't be able to excavate a pit within five feet of that lot.
So, again, if you're going to get a building, I can get a building, and I can put up a building within 15 feet of the lot line, and then if I want to drive around it, so now I can dig 10 feet around it, and I can still go to within two feet of that lot line. That's legal, but if I don't put up a building, I can't do that?
I don't think this is actually saying you can't excavate within 50 feet. You can't have a greater than three-to-one slope within 50 feet.
If no excavation shall take place closer than 100 feet of the existing public way, no excavation shall be permitted to occur within 60 feet of any lot line, and 5.1.
Oh, I was looking at the wrong word.
The other issue is, you've got to know where the septic systems are. You know, and you've got to know what the groundwater, right, but you've got to know where the groundwater is, you've got to know where the wells are, you've got to know, I mean, that's one of the concerns that Board of Health had. So, without any kind of oversight on how close you're going to the lot line, there is the ability to impact your abouter.
Right, but if, what I'm arguing is, so if I get a building permit to put up a building, then I can do more than what this says, which doesn't make sense.
I don't agree that that's what it's saying, is because excavating potentially could impact a septic system or a well.
Right, but if I can dig-
Versus a building is not going to.
If I can dig within 15 feet of a lot line with a building, correct?
But, you have to locate abutting septic system and abutting pipes. But, you're not, you're excavating what, for a foundation? You're not excavating 1,500 cubic yards?
If the grade comes up, and you're putting in a 60-foot wide house, and you're starting at a zero, so you're starting at a 100 elevation, and then the other 60 feet, it comes up to, you know, 110, 115. I'm going to within 15 feet of that house, I'm changing, I'm going to be zero here, 15 here, I'm digging this bankin' out so that the water's not coming into the second floor window. And you can, so with a building permit, you can do that, without a building permit, you can't do that. That's my argument.
I think that there have to be reasonable precautions for earth removal. And I would question, and I think we're open to hearing what is reasonable, and we're willing to, but I, but I'd also like to hear from people that do this. You said you're going to be up here every other week. I'd really like to know the cases in which this would have applied, and where it would have been a problem. Because I'm not, other towns, we are going even higher than most towns. Most towns are anywhere from 250 to 1,000.
Where are most towns? Towards Roseland?
We, no, we've looked at regulations around here.
Westminster, Winston-Den, Ashby, Sterling.
Townsend, we looked at all of the surrounding towns. So, we are going even higher than surrounding towns, and quite frankly, less stringent than many of them. So, if we're creating a problem, I'd like, I'd really like specific concrete examples in which this would have been a problem.
Well, I guess, I can't, you know, talk to everybody else, but, you know, I haven't had, I haven't had any, honestly, in the last year and a half, so, I mean, it's hard to argue that point, but I just don't want to come up here and look at for permits any more than I have to. The biggest thing is the permit not, I mean, building permit, not building permit. So, that's my only, that's my biggest concern, is I have to get a building permit, then that changes the whole circumstances. But, if I want to come in and I want to level my lot, I can't level it without going through all this. But, if I want to put up a house, if I want to put up a shed, then I don't have to do that. So, if I go get a building, if I go have four acres of land and I get a building permit for a 10 by 10 shed, I can do whatever I want.
Well, you can't get a 10 by 10 shed without a building, a house, so, because Well, you can't get a 10 by 10 shed without a, a building, a house, so, cause you can't have an accessory building without a primary use, so.
I can go get a building permit for a 10 by 10 shed.
If you have a house on the lot.
Why, why do I need a house?
Cause you'd have to have a primary use for an auxiliary use.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, well. All right. Well, those, those-
It'd have to be at least 10 by 21 feet.
Okay.
Because under 200 feet, no building permit.
Right, so.
Unless you're on Hickory Hills, which that's a whole different ball of wax. Good luck.
Don't wanna talk about that. All right. Well, I guess you kind of not answered them, but you've kinda given me an answer, so.
I think the intent with the building permit, part of things, is that in order to get a building permit, there is an assumption that you, you have oversight. And so the building inspector can come out, take a look at the thing and say, okay, this, that, the other thing. You're building to code, retaining wall, whatever, fences. And so, that's where those exemptions came from.
Right. I, I guess, what, what, my concern is that, yeah, it was, it was only 50 yards, but you might as well have not even had a regulation, cause nobody enforced it, nobody get anything about it. So now, now you're coming to a point where you're putting in, you know, more definitive wording. You're gonna, I don't know who's gonna enforce this, but now you've, you've, you've got regulations that are enforceable as compared to the other one. So, you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, every, every year there's more and more regulations, there's more and more, you know, permits, and it all goes back to the homeowner pays for it. And it's just, it just gets, you know, hotter and hotter every year to just do some little job for some homeowner because there's too much BS involved to start with. You know? I mean, I can see you guys are trying to eliminate some of that, but, you know, you eliminate one thing and you create three others. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jonas Vizzito, Mopass Road. Uh, the first thing I wanna say is, Paula, how many, you, you was telling Bobby that there's not a lot of activity for doing what you thought was, you know, how many of those do you do a year? Well, how many do you think there's done a year?
I, I don't know. I, I would like to know.
I don't, I don't think there's hardly, I don't think there's hardly any. So, to me, that right there, that should not even have that regulation in there if nobody does that at all. I mean, if it's done every week or every day, well, then it's time to regulate it. But if nobody's doing that kind of work, why have that regulation even in there?
You mean having an earth removal regulation at all?
No, I mean, if you're gonna take a few yards out of a guy's yard and put it in another guy's yard, then you gotta get a permit for both of them. One to take it out, one to put it in, right? If it's over 1,500.
Um, no, we took away the fill requirement. So if you wanna, we took out the fill component. So if you wanna fill your yard, you can do that. Um, the, this regulation only, um, is for earth removal itself.
Taking out.
Taking out, yep.
And I agree with-
And, and 1,500 yards is what would trigger it. A couple hundred yards would not trigger it.
1,500 is not, not a lot. I agree with Mark Burritt's, 5,000 is more like it. Because 1,500 is nothing. You can, you know, that's, that's peanuts. Move that in a couple of days.
Again, I mean, it's not, from our perspective, if it's 25 cubic yards per triaxial, that's 60 trucks, that's not peanuts if it's happening next door to you.
Yeah, but who's got 60 trucks? I'm not gonna take 60 trucks-
Well, it's 60 loads. It's 60 loads, whether it's one truck or, it's 60 loads.
All right. So how many loads a day you gonna do out of there?
I, I don't know.
Eight? 10? Five?
I don't know. But my, if my next door neighbor started taking, had, had, was removing enough earth to generate 60 truck loads of earth, I might wanna have some input on that. As, as a next door neighbor.
Over what period of time, though?
Well, that's the question, John.
Well, what period of time are you giving them to get that 60 loads out of there?
12 months, 12 months.
12 months.
The 1,500 yards is based on a calendar year. So wherever you start.
They don't care about the neighbor you're filling in the whole leg. You can fill to within 2 feet of the guy's yard and have a 10-foot bank. That's okay.
We, we, we took that, we, we took that out because of the outcry we heard about the fill component. So we took that out purposely.
Well, there's a lot of things that I like to talk about. I read through that paperwork. I mean, there's pages and pages of stuff, and I, I can't remember half of them. But it's just, I think you're moving too fast. You got too many small regulations that, you know, it's almost impossible to, to conform to. You gotta get an engineer, you gotta get a plan, you gotta get conservation, you gotta get a plot plan, you gotta pay for a permit, there's a, there's an inspection, there's a fine, there's a fee. I mean, it, there's gotta be a simpler, easier way to, to come to the conclusions that you want and get rid of. I mean, you've gotta get rid of some of those restrictions. There's just pages of them. It's ridiculous. Nobody could, you know, you can't conform to all those. You wanna go through every one of them at a time and stay here till midnight, we can do that. Let's go through every one of them. And, and see which ones are in and which ones are out. But I think it's, what you're trying to do, I think is a good idea, but I just think you've gone way over. And there's gotta be a way to simplify it and, and, you know, like, just like Danny's project. You're talking about dust and noise. Well, let him, give him his permits and let him do the project. And if there's a dust problem or a noise problem, you send the building inspector down there and he says, hey Danny, you gotta cut down on the dust here. Okay. But all these rules and regulations are put into effect ahead of time. Nobody thinks that the contractors in this town have any responsibility. We're all out to gouge the dirt out of town and knock down all the trees and, we're not doing that. We're just, you know, I mean, I don't see any bad operations in town at all. And you can't compare us to Keating. He's in another league. It's just, uh, it's just tough. It's tough on us. Like Bobby said, you, you come up and get permits, you gotta leave the job, you can't do what you gotta do. I think you should think it over, you know, and, and just try to make it simpler. And, I'm sure there's a dozen things in there that you could take out that, that could be implemented after the job has started. Like dust and noise. How much dust you gonna get out of a gravel operation? Gravel don't make dust. You go down to Keating's, they don't even have a water truck running around anymore hardly. There's no dust down to Keating's. There is, but I mean, it's, you know.
Well, I would argue against that, John. I think you can find many complaints in the border health office that would dispute that.
I was down here three times today and I didn't see any dust anywhere.
Well, I think you could, I think I could dispute that just by doing a record search.
Well.
On complaints.
Well, I'm sure it's not as dusty as everybody thinks it might be. But I mean, it's, I've, you know.
There's volume, when I worked in the border health office, we would get complaints regularly.
Well, yeah, everybody complains. All right. Thank you.
I wanna take this off to make sure everybody got, everybody that wants one got a copy of the, the proposed bylaw and the proposed regulations? Everybody have a copy? Okay.
You're right. If I sat down, I'd think about something else.
Uh, I'm just curious. It talks about the planning board having the, um, the right to have a public hearing to modify this. I thought any modification of any bylaws typically went to town meeting?
So the regulations we, we need public hearings about, but the bylaw, we need town meeting?
Right. So if you're gonna change-
You can't change the bylaw by public hearing. You can change the regulations.
Okay.
The bylaw gives them the authority to create the regulations and to change them, but only through public hearing.
Public hearing.
Mark, can I ask you the same question I asked Bob?
Yeah.
Do you have any concrete cases in which this bylaw would have been problematic because you were removing that quantity of fill?
I don't get into the heavy excavation. Uh, do I think it's possible that it could come up for a residential property? Yes. Have I seen it?
Well, all of you guys have been-
I've, I've seen, I've seen it before. I've seen people remove their backyards and they've done it over time and nobody, and nobody's seen it.
If you can give us examples, I, I would be really curious. All of you have been in town for a very long time, been in business for a very long time. And it would help me to know, okay, what, what, what is, what problems is this gonna cause for a model? I think Danny has some.
Yeah. So, I know of two pieces of land that I've looked at for the last 10 years, okay, that have gravel and they go like this. And they just gravel escars that you could take out the whole hill and make a flat yard out of it, okay? That absolutely positively have more than 1,500 yards, okay?
Okay.
Now, I wouldn't come in front of this board to do it, because I guarantee it'll be worse than what I've been going through for the last six to eight weeks, just because of the proximity to a lake. Okay? Now, at the end of the day, I guarantee those two escars of gravel could be removed and it would be no problem, and there would be no problems to the lake and, and anything else, okay? We could, you know, put grass, trees, whatever you want on it. You know, one of the big things, so when you're asking about examples, it's not so much examples that have happened. It's examples that aren't happening because just what Johnny was saying, that the more restricted it gets, then it just gets to the point that we say, you know what, it's not worth it. And I think the big thing we have to remember is, as contractors, we buy material every day. So if we can't get it locally, you know, I go to Ashby to get it. I go down to Keating's to get it. There's a lot of gravel operations in southern New Hampshire right now, opening up everywhere, all along the rivers through Route 13, Wilton, Brookline, that area, okay? So, we see all those trucks that come down through Northfield Road, Highland Street, trailer dumps every day, heading to Keating's with sand, okay? It's gonna come from someplace, so why not have it come from our town? So when you ask about these operations, it's not so much where have we seen examples of it, it's where examples haven't happened, because we're really, honestly, I don't wanna go through the headache for it, okay? But I know both of those sites could happen. And I think it's important to remember, okay, I had a gravel operation behind my house, all right? 220,000 yards of my dad took out of that property, okay? Now we have a beautiful field and a pond out back, all right? Reservoir Road, we took out 80,000 yards across from Flat Hill Road, right next to the water district property. Water district got a permit, we took out of their property, okay? You go by there now, every white pine that we planted, I think there was like 100 of them, they're all, you know, 30 feet high, fully engulfed, okay? That was only like 15 years ago that we planted those. Powell's have done, you know, their whole fields, pits that they had off of Goodrich Street are all beautiful horse farms now and fields and pastures and stuff. So good things can happen after earth is removed. So, again, to answer your question, it's more what hasn't happened, because if we get more restricted, it just gets more and more difficult. And honestly, that's more when guys are gonna just do it and say, and hope that we don't get caught and that we get our hands slapped and, and plead ignorance rather than go through the whole process. And that's why we're, we're trying to just make it easier on all of us and less expensive and less cumbersome and stuff. None of us like to come up in front of boards and get, you know, and I'm not saying I'm being disrespectful to a butter's concerns, I understand that. But at the end of the day, you know, I just feel like we have a right to make a living too, okay? I don't love the cop who's out putting down a roof at, you know, 8 o'clock on a Saturday morning banging nails, all right? But that's what the guy does for a living and he does it, okay? Sometimes snowmobiles go buzzing through my yard because I gave him permission to, but 40 snowmobiles go through the Cowdery Center and I hear them at all hours of the night. Well, I don't always love that either, but I respect the fact that there's people who like to go snowmobiling. So, we all have to live together and it's just the way it is. So, to answer your question, I know of examples of, of places that it hasn't happened.
So, so I really appreciate your input. And, but, but what I kept hearing is, the homeowner who wants to level their yard, or the homeowner who wants to make a lawn, or, is that a legitimate case? And that's my question, is have you guys run across a situation, not to get gravel out of an escar, which I can understand what you're saying, but I'm talking about, you know, everybody used, the homeowner is an example, they're gonna have to hire an engineer, they're gonna have to do this, they're gonna have to do that. Has, in all the years you guys have been doing this, have you come across a situation in which someone just wanted to level their yard and you had to take 1,500 cubic yards of earth out of somebody's yard?
Yes.
You have.
And I think they've done it.
You have.
People have just, so there's been no-
This is true confessions?
No, so, so that has happened.
Can we shut the camera off for a minute?
Okay.
I mean, that's the problem.
Okay. So, so, and it's just for single-family homes?
Yeah.
Yes.
People have just done it. Before they get permits, if they have a lot, I've seen people work-
Okay, not in connection with a building permit, just for landscaping permits.
Before they get the building permit, a lot of people get a lot and they'll do the work on that lot over time and then get the building permit. They never, they never apply because, yes, the policy now is, is not really enforceable. So-
Well, it is enforceable, it's just not enforced. Cause right now it's 10. Keep that in mind. Right now it's 10.
It's happening because it, you don't, it's not required to have a permit now. So now all those people are gonna be required to get permits.
It is required to have a permit. Right now, it is required.
But nobody-
Right. It's just like anything else. It's one of those gray areas that, yes, it was, but nobody really-
So my question right now is, you guys were aware that that was a required permit?
No.
No.
I never heard of it.
Never knew about it. Okay.
Well, for 20 yards. Tell me who's gonna-
10, 10, 10 yards, 10 yards.
I would think everybody in this room has probably removed more than 10 yards from their house.
Yeah. Right now it's 10 yards.
So, a couple of other things I, I, I think that we should look at is, what's triggering the, the site plan review? The change of, change of use for the properties he's listed, where Powell's has done their, their work, where he has done the work for the, the water district on Reservoir Road, where he did the work next to his own house. It didn't change the use of the property. Those properties are still used for the same thing. So, I, I think that that needs to be, needs to be looked at, because site plan review on top of everything else that's getting required, it, it, it's just another added layer of expense for somebody to do something. Um, the only two other things I'd like to comment on are the last ones, the waiver of compliance. Uh, the planning board may, we, may waive strict compliance, which tells me that the intention is that these are strict regulations. So I don't, I think that it needs to get loosened up a little bit. And severability. So I understand why it's in there. Has this been reviewed by town council?
Town council currently hasn't.
Okay.
And there's always a severability and that's pretty-
Severability is pretty standard.
Pretty standard language in any regulation.
Yeah. But I would think the town council should be looking at this to make sure that, you know, everything that you're trying to do is, is above board. Sure, I'll have more questions later on in life, but, thank you.
Maybe even later tonight. Thank you.
Okay, this is awkward for the right here, but Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive. And I just wanted to change the context of sort of what's going on here, because right now the board of selectmen are stuck with this permitting authority. And for a long time, it likely wasn't done correctly according to our bylaw. But over the last year, we've identified and been educated in the fact we're not doing it correctly. Once you know you're doing something wrong, you, I believe, become obligated to follow your bylaw. And I feel, even though it's absolutely absurd that it's 10 yards, it would be my role to follow the bylaws that I have been given. And so, there's a lot of fear in the bylaw that may be being created here and the permitting authority that's being transferred. But I personally would have a lot of fear with what currently exists, which is that selectman issue the permit. And it's not really, like in the slide presentation, it's not related to many things that we are doing. It's related to a lot of items that are already before the planning board, or conservation, or whatnot. But I feel like we've really been told by a lot of experts that we are doing it wrong, we are not following our bylaw. And then I would have to then ask our town manager, to ask town council, and to look into the fact that we haven't been following our bylaw and how we could implement following it, which is absurd. But that is the fear that lies in the fact of leaving it as it is. So I would encourage people to work together to make something that makes sense, so that we're not stuck with what we have, which is not good. Um, so, I think it's good to work on this project and not leave it with the selectmen and not leave it as it is, because I would feel obligated to say, all right, let's follow what we have. And nobody, I don't think anybody really wants to see that happen. Um, but I have some questions just as a citizen, based on what I'm hearing. And one is, a lot of projects sound like they might be regrading, and I don't know a lot about this. But if people are changing their front yards and altering things around their lot, if it involves a lot of regrading, they may not be removing it, even though they wanna change their hill. So in my mind, I'm seeing a project being described as more of a regrading or redistribution of dirt, which wouldn't trigger this. Because I don't see, um, material being hauled out, like, I've probably lived here as long as Paula, and I don't, I, I see everything happen around me and I don't visualize seeing a project where somebody's done this to their yard. And in terms of yard improvements, that would be one thing, and it would be concrete and it would end. So as in a butter, I'd be less concerned about that. But I'd be highly concerned about abutting a gravel operation. Because that's not something that even the, you know, I, I don't think most people would wanna butt a gravel operation. Um, maybe a big landscape project, fine, there's a, an end to that. Um, so one of my questions is, um, let's say it was 5,000 and somebody's taking the hill out of their yard, but they're in a water protection zone. Is there anything to trigger, like, protection of a massive digging operation, if it's 5,000 and I live in zone two and I wanna take my hill out? Is there anything to protect that land?
It'd be triggered, it'd be protected under the watershed protection.
What would pick that up?
Yeah, that would-
30 to 50% disturbing the natural vegetation.
But who would pick that up? If they can just go do it? If they can just go do it?
No, that's a legitimate question.
So that is something I'm highly concerned about, is to say, oh, well, they just want to remove this, but you're in a protected zone.
If there's no wetlands affected, then who would pick it up? That's your question.
And so that is a question, based on all the things we're talking about, is, this could be the only trigger to protect certain zones. So even if you alter it, become more lenient, we still want to look at the things that we're learning with the environmental impact of the one that we're all looking at. Think that might have been it. And in terms of, not to fear monger with our current bylaw, but it's extremely subjective. And so depending upon who's on that board, you could look at every ten feet, and think that it could be a health concern, or be dusty. So what we currently have could create a lot more trouble than trying to create something that's looking for the protection, but looking for cooperation and opportunity. And so I think that's it, except for one more thing. At a meeting a long, long time ago, and we talked about earth removal permitting before even the current applicant, when you were putting this together, you mentioned something with lot sizes. And that's interesting to me, is, the amount you remove could have, like, saying that, oh, this isn't a large amount, well, it might be in my yard.
Right.
If my neighbor removed fifteen hundred, and they live on point two acres, and granted it's waterfront, and it wouldn't be allowed, but, I think there's a lot size circumstance where the amount being removed isn't a big impact in some areas, and could be enormous in others. So I don't know if there's any way to look at it from that perspective.
Valid point.
Anyone else? So, I really appreciate you guys coming out and giving us some, some insight and direction and input. But I also want to acknowledge the fact that the, most of the people that have stood here are making money, they're not necessarily the homeowners. It's, it's not... We're trying to help the town, and we need to accept this. We, we need to accept some revision. We've been asked to take it from the Board of Selectmen, it totally makes sense. Permits after permits after permits, and hoops and jumping through them, you know, unfortunately, that is the cost of doing business. The bylaws in the town of Lunenburg are meant to protect the entire town, all the residents, all the residents that don't do business in town, all the residents that do do business in town. We're trying to limit the amount of these big, huge trucks driving down these tiny backroads. We're trying to protect the environment, we're trying to protect the neighborhoods, we're trying to protect our scenic roads. I mean, we, nobody wants to jump through hoops, honestly, nobody. We certainly do not enjoy sitting up here for four hours, trying to enforce stuff that honestly makes no sense. None of us wrote the existing bylaws. Not many of us wrote many of the bylaws. I would have to say that probably Paula and I have had hands in doing a few of them. Many of these are archaic and have just been here, we're stuck with them. We need to update them, and putting things together, and presenting them, and then bringing them to town meeting, is the only way we can do it. And we need to gain, we, we need consensus. It's not, it's not like, oh, he's wrong, he's right. We need to be able to agree to disagree, just to improve the condition that we're in currently. And, again, not to get into the fear mongering of the existing bylaw, but, I mean, now this has all come to light, it's, it's in the public eye, it's, it's, it's known, people have stood up here and said they didn't know about it before, but you can't say that next time. If it doesn't, if, if something doesn't get passed to change what we've currently got, then somebody's gonna stand up and say, well, we need to enforce what we have. So I, I beg you to allow us to make something that is passable.
But sadly, the public all got up and left.
Well, that's why I wanted you to sit down and let them speak.
Doesn't that speak?
It speaks volumes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with you. I just think you need to take some of the concerns that we have tonight, and kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit.
Definitely.
And see what we can do to come to a common ground on it.
Yep.
And, there was a lot of different things said about, you know, you make one regulation to improve upon another one that's antiquated, and it, and it, and it becomes worse. So, just, you know, I would, hope they would take the concerns that we had tonight, re-look at this bylaw, and try to address some of those concerns.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And if you, if you come up with anything further, please, please drop it to Adam.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing before...
Jackson Fox.
Just one thing, before you go, Mark, a lot of the comments we got tonight were
around the change of use topic, and how that applies to this operation. And just as a point of reference, if you had a single-family home on five acres of commercial land on Route 2A, and you were a landscaper, and you bought that home and said, I'm gonna park my one-ton dump truck in a landscape trailer, that is a change of use, that is a contractor's yard, you would go to ZBA, you would apply for a special permit, you'd get hours of operation, they'd look at screening, they'd look at distance to your neighbors, your butters would be notified, and that project, parking a one-ton dump truck in a trailer in a driveway, would be subject to site plan review. Simple as that. So, I think, when you compare it to that, and you look at the, you know, new curb cut, twenty-four-foot wide entrance, fifteen hundred trucks of material coming out, pales the little guy with the one-ton dump truck, right? And like Mr. Allison said, we can waive site plan approval, it's just, in this particular situation, there's a lot of things to consider. So...
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned about the guys that are for gravel permitting, I'm concerned about the homeowner that wants it better than his yacht. And that's where these regulations don't really apply to that guy. You know, I probably took the devil's advocate, went, you know, way more than I should have, but I'm just trying to point out that, you know, the, the gravel, the Keating's, and even, you know, that project there, and, you know, the gravel permits in town, they shouldn't be the same as this permit. You know, I know you're gonna try to create a uniform permit.
Yeah, and the challenge with all of this is, it's all relative.
Right.
So if you have a homeowner that's got a project that they're gonna remove sixteen hundred yards of material, but that equates to cutting a foot off of the top of their lot.
Right.
Well, if you go right to the neighbor's lot line, no big deal. It's a little bigger than a step.
Right.
But you take a smaller lot, and now you've got, you know, a twenty-foot cut.
Right.
I think, you know, most people would look at that.
Put a fifty-foot bank in next, you know, right next to the guy's yacht, but, you know, fifty feet away on a house lot, that's, that's only two-hundred feet wide, you haven't done anything.
Yeah.
You don't, I mean, particularly, like, the house is up on Flat Hill Road, up before you get to Rock Hill Road.
I'm, we gotta have this on the mic.
I didn't, I didn't want to cut this short, but, yeah.
Anyway, so, you know, it is what it is.
No, I was just saying, he's gotta talk on the mic.
I know, I know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anything? Anything? So, then, the, the question now comes, is this what you want to propose to town meeting?
I have real concerns about the six-foot to groundwater, I think we need to go to...
Well, and that's, that's the regulations, so that doesn't have to go to the warrant, it's not gonna go to the warrant.
Yeah, but I think that's gotta go to four.
But you can, you have time to talk about that. This is what has to be in by Monday.
Has to be in by Monday.
Correct.
No minute like the last minute.
Tonight's the night.
But we should've told people that.
But the six-foot being in the regs, we...
I was gonna say, it, it, what I heard, is a majority of the issues revolve around the regs.
No, well, the big issue that I heard was the fifteen hundred cubic yards.
Well, I was gonna say, exclusive of the, the volume.
The number is something that can be changed on the floor at town meeting.
That's correct.
That should not make us withhold back from doing this. And the six foot from the groundwater is in the rules in regs.
Correct.
And then the other thing I heard was setbacks.
Correct.
That's in the bylaw, or the regulations, the setbacks. I think it was in, that was, that was in the regulations.
I think it's in the regulations.
Exactly. So the biggest concerns tonight, two of, three of them, were in the regulations. So the biggest concern...
But...
Was the, something that can be easily changed on town meeting floor.
I agree completely with what you're saying, but prior to town meeting, I think we need to make this a priority, to look, re-look at the regulations, so that when we go to town meeting, we have them together.
Correct.
So that people can look at the regulations and see the adjustments that have been made. And I think the point that was made about lot size, we definitely need to talk about that, because even you just emphasized that. It really depends on what it is that you're doing.
Well, and I think unfortunately, that's something that's very difficult to put into worry. It's very easy to talk about the intent.
It's a nuance that, it takes these regulations and makes them a hundred pages long, because you're trying to come up with regulations...
For every scenario.
For every instance.
And not only that, I mean, your, your lot size is a square footage, and this fifteen hundred is a volume, it's a, it's a cubic. So, I mean, you could have this little tiny thing that's huge, or deep.
So essentially, where we're at right now, we're, we're in pretty good shape with the exception being the yardage, which, if somebody wanted to propose a yardage change, they can do that on town floor. And then, the point that we discussed earlier, in terms of the existing earth removal permits, how they move forward, it sounds like our intent is to allow those operations to continue and waive the requirement on the six-foot offset.
Or change the six-foot offset to four.
I think the six-foot's gonna be changed to four.
Just change that in general.
Well, in a lot of ways, I think that makes sense, because four is the Title V.
Correct.
Four is Title V.
Five is Title V.
No, four is Title V.
No, five, for new construction, is five feet.
Really?
Yeah.
When did that change?
Two thousand and eight.
Okay.
No, I don't, don't quote me on that, but it is five feet standard.
Five feet from the bottom of the trenches?
Yeah, the bottom of the trenches have to be five feet above groundwater.
From the bottom of the stone.
From the bottom of the stone?
I thought it was four.
Which is the trench?
Well, yeah, but, but if, if you get to four feet above groundwater with a, with a removal, and you're adding stone...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you're, you're not, you're potentially not harming...
Your ability to install a system.
Correct.
Right, so the four feet you're thinking, I think, is naturally pervious, pervious material.
No, it used to be a four-foot groundwater separation, and we used to be able to waive it from, to three feet with innovative systems.
Anyways...
But it sounds to me like we, we really can't change this in such a way that it allows current permits to just meet.
I, I, not, not that I have ever encountered.
Okay.
And again, as I said, general bylaws are so different than zoning, which has the grandfathering built into the state statute, and general bylaws, once you change them, it doesn't matter, everybody's subject to them.
All right, and aside from the noise makers, I wanna make, I wanna make it clear, again, that this is for over eleven thousand people in twenty-six square miles, not two permit holders.
No, I understand, I understand that point, but I also think we've got to take into my, into, into consideration what was said. I mean, I think that the point about the groundwater offset was very valid. I think that the point about, and I don't know, I'm struggling with the fifteen hundred squ, hundred cubic yards, I mean, if...
Too much or too little?
I would let the fifteen hundred yards play out on town meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think five thousand is unheard of.
I think one of the slides that we show has to show the local towns and their, and their current...
Yeah, I think we've got to look at that. We've got to include that in the presentation.
And I think in terms of trying to anticipate, you know, how many people this would affect, or how many projects, or how many contractors, that is always gonna be a moving target. It's gonna change from year to year, depending on what people are looking to do in their My experience would say that most people for, if they're doing these type of activities, are gonna be pulling building permits.
Right. Yeah, in conjunction with an, with an addition, with a pool, with a, I don't think many people are taking fifteen hundred cubic yards to put up a swing set.
Yeah, and so I think it's, it's got built-in exemptions that will put a lot of people outside of the jurisdiction of their removal process. So, I mean, even if they want to construct a retaining wall over four feet...
Over four feet of uncontrolled fill, you need a permit.
Then they need a building permit. And if they're gonna go over, I believe it's ten feet, they need an engineered drawing. And so, you know, if you're gonna do an engineered drawing for a large retaining wall, you're, you've already done all the engineering for it at that point.
And I mean, a lot of, a lot of those, like, block system walls will give you a pre-stamped engineered drawing, but you still have proof that it's gonna hold.
Yeah. So, and you have the oversight of the building official at that point.
So it's four feet in soils with more than two minutes an inch, it's five feet with a rate of two minutes or less. So maybe that's what we adopt. Because if they've got a really fast perk rate, we don't want it to be four feet. Maybe we adopt what, what's required by Title V.
So there's, there's, there's the, there's the technicality that I was trying to point out earlier, is the Stormwater Handbook, it talks about hydraulic soil groups, A, B, C, D. And they have an associated, they have an associated...
Infiltration, infiltration rate, yeah.
And, and that is typically what's used, the, the Title V is just forceptic, and it's not used anymore for the, for the drainage. But, this is, this is not necessarily set Title V either, because that is super contaminated and it's hazardous material.
Right, right.
Not, not likely to be getting super contaminated hazardous material.
From storm, right, from gravel operations.
And honestly, five feet is, is way more than you really need in sand, to clean.
Right, right. And if they're doing a gravel removal operation, most likely, is a four-foot, I mean, to me, a four-foot separation would be fine. Would you agree or not?
I would agree, yeah.
Okay.
And that's part of the regs as well.
Correct.
One of my big issues is the permit holders, the existing permit holders. Because if we're gonna require all of the existing permit holders to meet these regulations, it's gonna cost them a fortune.
But, going back to what Adam brought up, it sounds like most of the permits are held by Keating's, and they already meet all of this.
A, a majority of it, and, and they've reviewed this, and are aware of what the requirements will be moving forward.
Yes, please.
Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue, just one, one comment, on, as I was leaving, I heard you talking about both the warrant article and then the regulations. And I would probably offer a suggestion, that if you didn't want to mire town meeting, which doesn't have approval over regulations, and that's a planning board process, if you're, if they're both introduced at the same time, you will overwhelm people, in my opinion. I would keep the article, the article, and suggest to people that there will be a period at which point you will talk about regulations, and I would not introduce them both, because people will conflate them, and, like, possibly like last time this came up, be afraid to vote for any change at all. Even if the change, if we enforce it now, as people have indicated, is much more stringent than what is being proposed. They just will freeze into keeping the status quo. Just my personal observation, but a suggestion.
Well, the reason, the part of the reason why we came up with the regulations, is because what we heard at the last town meeting was, oh, they have the right to adopt any regulations, and then it's just gonna be more restrictive, and that was one of the reasons why it was shot down. So that's why we worked diligently to try to draft the regulations, so we could eliminate that fear. Because that's one of the things we heard from several of the people that spoke, is that this gives people, them the right to just draft regulations, and we don't know what those regulations are gonna be... we don't know what those regulations are going to be. And so, that was why we reacted to that concern.
Well, that was a part of it. I think the other part that I remember from the last meeting was the fill portion, which is not even in this. The fill portion took up a lot of that conversation.
Right.
And again, it went into changing too much too soon. I think the regulation process has to be told to people that the Board of Selectmen could adopt regulations on this, on this as well. I mean, the regulation process for any bylaw is up to the, you know, permeating the, the authority of that bylaw where it falls, and it should just be treated as a separate, a separate issue. You already have a draft, and that's fine. I just wouldn't necessarily propose them at the same time, because I think, again, I think people are just going to be overwhelmed by the number of changes, and just say, listen, let's do step one, change the amounts, change some of the things that were displayed in the presentation, which I think by most people's terms would be just common sense changes. Change it to the planning board, I think makes sense. I support that. Changing the amount, of course, is completely makes sense. And as far as the 1,500, I mean, if we have other towns that are much lower, I don't see a problem with keeping the 1,500, and explaining to the general town meeting voter what that means. I mean, it's a hundred and, 1,500% increase than what we have now. So, that's a large amount. And all the other changes are kind of ministerial. There were very few substantive changes. There was the inclusion, if I could say this, the inclusion of the exclusion of driveways, which doesn't exist now, which again, from the last town meeting that it got voted down, made sense, because somebody constantly talked about driveways. So I think they, I think it has a great chance of, of passing with that. I just think it may muddy the waters if you talk about regulations at the same time. Again, it's this board's presentation. I just wanted to offer that as a suggestion.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
So, one, is there currently regulations? I mean, there are rules and regulations.
None that I am aware of.
So, just the bylaw?
Right.
And so, that's why, that's why the previous statement was that we're mishandling it, because you've got no written way to deal with it, and it comes up so infrequently.
Right.
And probably it comes up so infrequently that it's completely different membership that deals with, anyways, so that's the answer, the first one. Second one is, what is your route for enforcement?
Our enforcement has always been through the building inspector, and who's also the zoning enforcement.
And so zoning in Lunenburg is by complaint, mostly. Nobody, nobody gets caught, caught up until somebody complains about it.
Until the renewal process. I mean, the renewal process is where it was supposed to, and it, and it had been with our previous, not our most recent previous building inspector, but two previous. There were reports that, that he was going out, and never came up with something. It wasn't until his replacement that, that violations and, and...
Started occurring, or?
Well, that they started getting reported.
Because, okay.
Right. So, it wasn't, it wasn't that the, the official who was in charge of it wasn't going out necessarily. It wasn't that they weren't reporting or looking at potentially the whole permit, and what had been permitted versus what was happening.
Okay, so the answer is through the building official?
That's how it's been, yeah. That's how it's been done in the past.
Very good, thank you.
And as far as, as far as the, you know, the, the current 10 cubic yards, I mean, there's always the case, as you mentioned, protecting scenic roads. So there's people who, even if you, it's not like we didn't enforce that, because in order to enforce it, there would have had to have been a permit to begin with. There's no enforcement for things that people do illegally, except the police, I guess, or some neighbor saying, hey, you know what, I just keep seeing truck after truck going down. They never came to us for a permit, because they're like, oh, you know, it's either not worth the trouble, or they didn't know that something so low needed one, because most people aren't really familiar with the bylaws anyway.
But if you did get a complaint, and the zoning officer checked it out, and it came to you, then you would act on it.
Exactly. And that, that never happened. I mean, we never got a complaint from anybody that I ever remember in 15 years, that somebody was hauling out earth in large quantities to trigger a neighbor saying, what in the world's going on? So...
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great night.
You too.
All right. Does that horse need more beating?
No.
We've got stormwater to get to.
It does, because this has to be done by Monday, right?
Yeah, but it sounds like the bylaw's not the issue. The regulations are the issue.
Have we compared that the bylaw's not the issue?
We're going to add the word native.
Yeah.
Okay, we very, yeah.
And we're going to leave, we're going to leave the existing permits alone, and leave it up to the waiver process, is that... So 145A?
I wish there was something that we could build into it that made that explicitly clear, but I don't think we're in that position, and so, but fortunately, by the sounds of things, most of the permit holders currently will, will be in compliance anyhow. So...
Okay, so I think that's the only change.
Depending on how the regs shake out with the offset to groundwater. So...
All right, are you, have we covered all the bases?
No.
No.
I don't think we'll ever cover all the bases.
Okay.
Have we got, have we got what you need for Monday?
I have, yes, I have what we need.
Okay.
I guess that's the important thing. All right, so stormwater bylaw, woo-hoo!
Well, we have, I, I would say that you need to do your removal from chapter first.
Okay.
Because the selectmen are meeting on those tomorrow, and, and it would be crucial that they have your input.
And it's, we're not looking for stormwater for the ATM, right?
No.
I would love to, but we don't have to.
It has to be in by Monday?
Yes. We, we absolutely don't have to have it done. I don't, I don't, there's, no, I don't think we'll be...
But isn't it primarily complete?
Let's do these, and then we'll talk.
I, I don't, I don't think it is.
Okay. Backing up to where we should be, the removal from chapter, there's four properties. Do we want to do them individually, or all, kind of?
We have to do them individually.
You have to do them individually.
So the first one is 322 Flat Hill Road. That, again, as I stated before, when we reviewed the A and R, that is a property across from my mother's house, and I, I have nothing to gain from it one way or another, so I'm declaring that I don't have an issue. All right, do you have a DD for us, Adam?
I don't. I mean, you've, you've got the information. There's, there's two lots there. They're about 10 acres. They want to take them out of, of 61B, and sell them to build houses.
Yeah.
And they're zoned residential?
They are. They're zoned outline.
Uh, no, the two, the two that are for sale are Res A, the existing houses outline. I think it's 300 feet back from Flat Hill.
And there isn't, they don't abut, abut any conservation, existing conservation land?
Doesn't appear that way.
One of them, one of them goes along existing apple orchard. The rest of them, I mean, they've been recreated on for, since I was born. But there's, I'm...
Just looking at the other owners, it doesn't...
Yeah, so it's right next to it in a village at Flat Hill, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So...
In two spots.
So the frontage is outlining, the rear part of the lot is Res A.
Well, the, the frontage is next down to 30 feet along the order.
But if, if we look at the zoning map...
The lines on the plan.
It's the lines right on the plan.
I know, I put the line there. Not the zoning line, the, the subdivision line. We did, we did that A and R in my office.
I mean, in reality, the houses are going to probably be in Res A.
Right. I guess that's what I meant to say. I apologize.
Well, I don't see, from a planning perspective, I don't see any need that we need to retain it as a community. So I would make a motion to notify the Board of Selectmen that the planning board does not recommend that the town retain the property, or, what is it? Exercise our right of first refusal.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. The next one is 57 and 63. 57 and 63 Cross Road.
So these were divided, ye, oh, a few years ago. They're right off of Cross Road, uh, I'm sorry, right off of Prospect Street. And they're right up in the, I guess they're not right up, they're past a few, several houses. They're associated with that new house that was built right on Prospect Street, that stretches to the corner of Cross Road. They're the remaining lots in the back. The frontage is a little further down on Cross Road, to what will be single-family homes, is my understanding.
So I would make a motion that we inform the Board of Selectmen that the planning board does not recommend that the town exercise its right of first refusal.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Third is Track A, Holman Street, Northfield Road. This one, recently there was, and I don't know that that makes any difference. I don't know about any recent things. Does it make a difference, the recent enforcement, or issue concern?
From the Historical Commission?
Wasn't it the APDC that came to us?
It was the Historical Commission.
Okay.
So what's the concern?
There was a, an allegation that a stone wall was removed on a scenic road. I don't know that that would have impact on the ability to exercise right of first refusal. I mean, they're, they're separate issues.
So they're removing eight acres?
Correct.
And rem, and leaving the 92.8 in chapter?
Correct. And this is, again, the corner of Holman and Northfield. It's the west, southern west, or the northern westerly corner of the intersection. There was logging that was done there 18 months, two years ago.
Well, wait a minute. The logging was done by, across from the lane, wasn't it? It wasn't all, it didn't go all the way to this property?
It came all the way down to Northfield.
It did come all the way down?
It's all one piece of property.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So the question I have, and I'm not 100% sure on all of this, but it was my understanding that in order to go through the right of first refusal, the offer to purchase needs to be a bona fide offer without contingencies.
That's correct. That's correct.
So this purchase and sale has six...
It has been reviewed by town council.
Okay.
And he said it has, it has met the, the standards.
Okay. There's just a lot of contingencies built in here, so...
Well, I don't think you'd want to offer nearly half a mill for eight acres without a bunch of contingencies, would you? I wouldn't.
I wouldn't either, but that's not the purpose of the right of first refusal, is that you have a bona fide offer. And it was my understanding that a bona fide offer is without contingencies.
And what I'll say is that prior to us even bringing them to the planning board, we wait for the town manager's executive secretary to notify us that town council has certified a bona fide offer. So this, this intent to sell came three or four times before it was certified?
Yeah, he's working hard on this. So I think, I think bona fide offer is simply assigned, executed purchasing.
No, but there can't be, there can't be...
There are restrictions on what, what contingencies can be in there.
Yeah.
So it can't be contingent on the issuance of permits, generally. So you can't say you need to get, I'm going to sell you my field as long as you get a permit from the ABCC to install a distillery.
Okay. That makes sense.
Because the land is more valuable, obviously, with the permit. And so, you're driving the cost up to the town.
So it looks like this is going to be five lots?
Uh, that's, I thought it was seven lots, or eight lots.
Approved A and R plan for lots one and two, and a town approved plan for lots three, four, and five.
I don't think I've seen any.
They, we have not divided this property.
No, there's no A and R. I don't, what?
Well, buyer will deliver to seller a town approved A and R plan for lots one and two, and a town approved plan for lots three, four, and five, prior to the date buyer sells the first lot from Track A. It's condition number F, 24F.
I, I, I can't tell you what this means, because they, they clearly have some agreement. It was conveyed to me that it's a bona fide offer, and the Board of Selectmen is looking as to whether or not the planning board feels those eight acres are, have a planning function for the town to retain. Actually, that would make sense, five acres and eight lots, because the RA zone runs the frontage of the property, and is only 100 or 200 feet deep. It is maybe about 300 feet deep. So by the time you put in a lot, you've used up the majority of the RA, and anything in the back would end up going into the outline.
Yeah, this is an interesting condition. H, look at H on the next page.
On the plan is number 31, the... What's that, conservation?
No, 39 is the conservation piece. That little weird neck with the funny...
Okay. What is that, the peg, peg?
That sign.
I don't know. I'm blanking on it. But I know the sign is out by the road there.
Right. NCLT put up a sign, and Wendy was not happy about it, because people were coming into her driveway to go to the barn.
Oh, okay.
Advertising to her barn.
Yep.
So, I mean, since the purchase and sale agreement has already gone to town council, and they've already told us that it's bona fide, then is this even an issue for us to be concerned with? Any of these?
I'm just trying to understand, where, where's the lane property in comparison to that?
So... No, it's not on the other side of the Mulpus. If you see, if you see the Mulpus Brook, you see where number 11 is? Actually, where it says 102119, Chapter 61?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the lane property.
This is the bridge that's out right here.
Oh, okay, okay. This is where his house is?
Yeah.
Okay.
His house is right around where 17 is.
17 is, okay. So what is this asterisk referring to? That's referring to Track A?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Well, I don't see a reason for the town to retain it. I mean, it's not contiguous with conservation land. I'd be more concerned if, I would want to retain, if he were to sell, you know, the majority of parcel 11, then I would be concerned. But with this small section, I... But with this small section, I don't know if it's a concern. From an open space perspective, I'm really curious what they think about this, because this is, and we haven't talked about it yet, and I don't know.
Let's say, we haven't been able to get in touch with Brandon. We've sent him several emails, and he hasn't responded.
Because they didn't go to the Open Space Committee?
It has been sent to them, it's been sent to Brandon, he hasn't called a, a meeting.
Okay.
We've been, I, so I don't know if, if you guys have had any communication, because we have not.
Do you know when it went?
Uh, I know Marjorie has sent him several emails for all, for all of these. I don't know specifically when, but I know over the past few weeks, she's been.
Well, I can reach out to the other members, because, I mean, I, I would like to hear whether this meets their criteria, but from a planning perspective, I don't see an issue with planning. But I do think, in this case, I'd want to hear from Open Space, because I know the lane property was high priority habitat. But from a, from a Planning Board perspective, I would make a motion that the Planning Board recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we don't exercise our right of first refusal.
Is there a second?
I don't know, I struggle with this one, this, and I'm not Town Council, and I realize he's agreed to all of that, but the language in here, especially for the time of performance, and I mean, there are a lot of contingencies in here, and especially the one that Mrs. Bertram pointed out. H basically talks about adjusting the lot, so at that point, they're gonna take more land out?
Yeah, that concerns me, it really depends on where that line is, that's important to me.
It does, yeah.
Because it could theoretically join the conservation land over here.
Right, and then I would be, right, right, and if it were to go towards the Brook or something, then I'd be concerned, so.
But I mean, you're, this property is a thousand or more feet away from the Brook.
Right.
So even if they were adjusting to make a well, it would be insanity to move terribly far.
No, I'm saying relative to the other, number thirty-nine, which is probably two hundred and somewhat.
So is it contiguous with thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine is probably.
Two hundred and fifty.
Six hundred.
One inch is equal to five hundred feet.
But if you look at the, if you look at where the line divides the property in half, up to number one, that's two hundred feet.
Is two hundred, so that's probably four hundred or some odd.
Yeah.
I mean, it's four, four to five hundred.
But you're talking about for five lots. I mean, you don't know what the soils are gonna be. If they're gonna put five lots on this parcel, so it could adjust significantly.
Mm-hmm, but then there, there would be a second.
But there's not gonna be another right of first refusal, according to this, if this is a bona fide offer.
So anything outside of that eight acres goes up for sale, then it's gonna come back?
Correct, anything outside the eight acres.
Anything outside the.
That's not what this says.
It doesn't matter what that says, this is, this is.
Are we certain of?
Well, well, they're only removing eight acres from chapter.
Right. So if, if it comes down to that thing about the condition, and the seller will try to accommodate on the existing property, then he's gonna have to come back. If he finds another site suitable for a well that's not in the eight acres that he's already removed, then he'll have to come back. I would assume.
Well, and that's, does it? Because if Town Council's saying this is approval, this is okay, I have a real problem with condition H.
Well, not only that, but in the description of the parcel, there's no meets and bounds, it's just referencing a plan that.
Is hand-drawn.
Hand-drawn, and, I mean, so how do you have a bona fide offer for a parcel of land that's described?
That I don't know, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I don't want to play Town Council, I, this was communicated to us from.
Do we have a copy of a deed that supposedly, like, it references a deed that's on record, so it should be.
That would have been what Darren bought, probably, right?
No, because the, if you look at the hand-drawn plan, ten twenty-one nineteen, chapter release, prepared by those ZOT surveyors, and then that is referenced.
What's the book and page?
It's written right here.
Eight, one, nine, three, page one oh seven.
Eight, one, nine, three.
That's when the current on the.
Page one oh seven?
Yeah.
And it says right here, in the description.
Yeah, that's Mulpus Brook Acres Realty Trust and Solinger Lane to Darren Massey.
So that's the part of the lane property that the town didn't buy?
Right.
So the lane property was three hundred plus.
What's the acreage that's recorded?
One forty-something.
Because.
One four zero.
It's loading, give me a minute.
No, it's two.
Uh, one containing approximately a hundred acres, and one containing approximately thirty-five acres, so a hundred and thirty-five all day.
Yeah.
And there is a plan recorded by David E. Ross, drawn in two thousand and fourteen.
So this was received on the twenty-sixth.
So, I mean, we don't, we don't have any way to condition, this isn't even an approval of anything, this is a recommendation, right?
Correct.
So we can't recommend with condition, right?
It's a question.
You can do whatever you want!
It's a question of whether or not we recommend that they execute their right of first refusal. That's, does the Planning Board recommend they execute their right of first refusal? That's the question that we're faced with.
Well, okay, so in the case they try to get five lots on eight acres, would that, would that require, that wouldn't require site plan approval?
ANR.
So if the only thing that would require is an ANR?
Maybe stormwater permit.
Depending on how long, how long they took to do it.
No.
They could do half acre, they could do half acre a year, like.
I don't think there's a year, I think it's just total disturbance.
Okay, well, the outlining zoning is two-acre minimum lot size.
Correct.
And is the majority of it rez A?
Yes. The, the front three hundred feet is rez A. So I would, I would assume that there's three rez A lots at one acre each, and then two, two acre lots.
Okay.
So that's seven acres.
So they're gonna be nitrogen-sensitive, because they're gonna, oh, no, they got town water in Northfield, don't they? They definitely don't have sewer.
My only concern is if in order to get their five lots, they have to change this lot line in such a way that it would be contiguous with conservation, then I think we might want to rethink our right of first refusal. And I don't know how we condition that.
Well, and I guess therein lies the trouble, because once we pass on our right of first refusal, you can't go back. In other words, you release this eight acres, if they change the lot line and gobble up another, say, six acres, you can act on the six acres, but you can't go back and say, I want the eight.
You can't get back the eight, because you've already not executed.
Yeah. And my question is, and I am well aware that Town Council has reviewed this, but in my mind, I don't know how you have a bona fide offer that does not legally describe the parcel. Because the deed reference in the purchase and sale references a hundred and some odd acres, and they're talking about eight acres as drawn on a plan with no meets and bounds, like.
And there's no stamp on it.
And there's no stamp.
It's not even registered.
No. It's a hand-drawn line, I mean.
So.
I, it, yeah. And where this was received on the twenty-sixth, we have until the eighteenth tag, twenty-one days.
Well, that depends on when the Selectmen.
A hundred and twenty days.
It depends on when the Selectmen received it. When did the Selectmen receive it? We received the twenty-sixth, but when did the?
I believe that this came the same day. Because what happens is, we're, we get it the same day the Selectmen do, because we're one of the statutory requirements.
So why don't we send them a letter saying we have concerns about the conditions of the purchase and sale, specifically condition H? Did you have another one?
Well, I'm concerned about the description of the property.
Right, the description of the property, condition H, and the lack of an engineered stamp on the plan, and the possible reconfiguration of the land to be withdrawn from chapter. So I withdraw my motion. And I make a motion that we send such a letter to the Board of Selectmen, and to the applicant. Or the landowner.
You ready to second that one?
Well, I would just like to, I'll second the motion and make one amendment that we involve Town Council.
Second that amendment, I, I accept that amendment.
With those points.
You mean, see, see Town Council? Or, what do you mean by involve Town Council?
I would like feedback from him that confirms that this, in fact, is a bona fide offer, as it's described.
And, and I would like information from him as to how to, the concerns regarding the possible lot reconfiguration. I, I don't know how we can, that raises huge concerns for me, because like you said, it might change, and it might become fourteen, but we can't go back and get the eight.
So we have a motion, a second, an amendment.
And the amendment was approved by the mover, moving party?
Yes.
All right, I think that's technically correct, right?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna have to read this, because it's pretty interesting.
And we're not doing the Howard Street?
No, we can't.
Yep.
All right, now we can talk about stormwater. If we intend to get it for ATM, and we have, and we finish it tonight, and have it ready to go in on Monday, then I suggest we continue to talk about it. If not, then I suggest we skip over it.
So you said you don't think it's ready, why don't you think it's ready, Adam?
I mean, I just think there's things that, that, that you folks need to nail down and report back to, and I need to get touch base with the consultant on what your thoughts are, and then if you need additional feedback from him. I think really the two things that came up in my discussion, he added some definitions. And I think they were all worthwhile additions. The question that came up was applicability. And I got a new computer with new words, so it took me a while to figure out how to get you all the information on here, because it was just showing the funny red line on the left, but, so he was confused about changing the applicability, and whether or not the board wanted it to apply to everything, or to just things that disturbed forty thousand square feet or greater, but listed some of the things so that people were aware, like subdivision site plan, that stuff.
So the only thing we changed in applicability was we removed the drainings to the town of Lunenburg's municipal separate stormwater.
Well, you proposed a whole new paragraph for applicability in the notes that you had sent me. And the board said, oh, yeah, that would be fine. You had pulled something from Canton, I think it was?
So, looking at this, is, is it the?
If you look at the purple comment, WU three.
Yeah.
That's the language that you had sent me.
Yeah.
And it doesn't reference forty thousand square feet, it reference everything, it references everything that site plan and otherwise.
Where are you, I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm on the fifth page, under letter D, applicability.
Yeah.
There's the comments off on the right side.
Yeah.
WU three.
Yeah.
That language is the language that you had sent.
Okay.
In your comments to the bylaw. So rather than changing the text here, I put it in a comment and said, this is something the board's considering.
Hold, hold on, I, I don't know that that's true, because this was something that was in there, and draining to the town of Lunenburg's municipal separate stormwater system was already in there.
I'm not talking about the text in the middle, I'm talking about what's in the sidebar.
Okay.
Under WU three in that little box.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
I see WU six on the fifth page. Am I looking at the wrong thing again?
It's double-sided.
Yeah, right, one, oh, on the, on the tenth page.
No, on the fifth page. One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, I think I might have gone overboard with that one.
You don't have the most. Right there. Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. So you just want to leave it as it is, and remove draining to the waters of the Commonwealth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that's fine.
The Waters of the Commonwealth is, is protected and dictated by?
I'm sorry, not the Waters of, I'm talking about the, yes, yes.
The town of Lunenburg's municipal separate stormwater system.
Yes, the, the time change has got me at this point.
What were we gonna change it from? Oh, you want to, you want not to change it?
Yeah.
We're just taking out, yeah.
All right, so W three, WU three is Paula, right?
Well, no, it's me typing your comment in.
Okay, so who's red?
Red is Nick, our consultant, our consultant from CEI.
Okay, and light blue or gray?
Uh, that's me.
Okay.
I'm both light blue and gray.
Okay, okay, just trying to track who's saying what.
Trying to make it as confusing as possible.
Yep. So what he said is, you're, in, for, for the exemption is, that's what's in there now, and you're exempting them from work outside of the MS four, but not inside the MS four.
So I'm on Stormwater Task Force, and I still get confused sometimes. So the whole town is responsible for this MS four, but there's certain areas of town that aren't covered.
Aren't not regulated.
Which are unregulated.
That's correct.
And those are the ones that are less developed.
They tend to be, yes.
Now, we've talked about having a credit system for people who aren't in the, the covered area.
Well, that, we're, that's.
Right, I mean.
That's well out of bounds of this.
Is this touching upon anything like that?
No, no. This is just for regulating disturbance of forty thousand or more.
Okay, which is also covered by the, in the SWIP.
General, the general permit, yes.
So we're exempting, so work outside of the MS four by the town, regardless of the amount of area disturbed.
Would be exempt from the stormwater permit.
And I disagree with that, I don't know why the town would be exempt from the stormwater permit.
I mean, you.
To make the people comply with the regulations, I think we should have to.
That's fine.
Yeah, we should.
So I don't think we should exempt ourselves.
If you want to remove it, you can.
We're exempt from most everything else.
We, we're exempt from pay and fees, and that's fine, but I don't think we should be exempt from stormwater regulations. If we care enough about them to make everyone else do it, why would we not make ourselves do it?
It just seems the way that Lunenburg works.
Yeah, well, I'm not okay with that.
I'm not either, but.
So let's take that away.
Lock the boat, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, no. So on the red comment, encourage the use of low-impact development practices, such as reducing impervious cover and preserving green space in other natural areas. He says, if we're gonna say this, maybe we want to consider including more information on low-impact development techniques.
And that's why I sent you Westminster's bylaw.
And then, here you go.
So in, in speaking with him, and I'm gonna jump ahead to, my brain hurts. So even if we skip that encouraging low, we can skip that, because that's fine, that's a purpose. a purpose. I would like to go to standards.
I really wish this had page numbers.
Yeah, sorry, I can put them on there, but.
Where are standards?
In date, so I don't have to keep writing them in the corner, as I've been asking for quite a while.
I will say, this wasn't my draft, so I don't.
Okay, so.
So on page three of the Westminster stuff?
No, no, in the stormwater bylaw.
Along with all the red writing.
Yeah. So this is where we talked about adding A and B soil types to the low-impact development. The consultant's recommendation is, the text that he put in there is as it's written in the permit. And he said, we could, if you want to really encourage it more, we should either write a low-impact development bylaw, or pick out a couple of low-impact development manuals and reference using them.
Stormwater management has some.
I think the bylaw is probably gonna hit on more of the things that I've heard from Paula and Matt over the past few months, as we've talked about this, than just giving someone a manual and saying, here, pick some stuff out of this.
No, I mean, like, give us guidance on stuff that's already.
What do you mean?
I thought you were talking about finding other places that have better defined LID practices.
Well, that's, he's, no, he's talking about, like, finding a manual, like, an EPA low-impact development BMP manual, and referencing, using stuff like that.
Like, volume three of the Stormwater Handbook?
Yeah, that is volume three.
Goes over all of the low-impact development? Is that what worked, Ricky?
You could. What he said a lot of towns are doing, are doing these low-impact development bylaws, and they're general or zoning bylaws, and they essentially require it, like Westminster is requiring it for 10,000 square feet of disturbance or more. So you get into low-impact development for commercial development, which eliminates some cost of installation and management of infrastructure, pipes, catch basins, et cetera, and replaces it with green infrastructure, which has its own maintenance costs and its own bits to it, but you start to get more of that throughout town, and you have something to lean back on for requiring it within the stormwater bylaw. I'm not necessarily.
So a low-impact development separate from the stormwater bylaw?
Correct.
To improve stormwater.
To improve, I mean, to, yeah.
Minimize how much more stormwater you have to deal with.
Right, so they're not tied together, we can't put it as one bylaw.
So maybe we could put a measure on the rate, on the, on the volume.
But if you do them separately, and you require the low-impact development bylaw for 10,000 square feet of disturbance, you're pulling in more stuff into the low-impact development than you would by just requiring it with the stormwater.
It provides more flexibility.
Correct.
More protection.
Correct, and then when you hit 40,000, 40,000, bigger than 10, both are applicable.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So it offers more protection if we do it separately.
I don't know that it's more protection or less protection, it's, you're requiring the use of low-impact development more frequently.
Yeah.
Like, requiring, not recommending, not suggesting, not, hey, we'd really like it if you did it, you, boom, you've got 10,000 square feet of disturbance, you have to meet these standards.
Yeah.
I read through Westminster's very quickly, I didn't, I know the planner out there, he's, he knows his stuff, so, again, I don't want to say they're perfect, I don't want to say they're gonna, we can just take this and cross out Westminster and write Lunenburg, and we're on the road to Lidtown, but I think it's a place to start. I know the state has a model, but I wanted to show an application that is being used in the real world.
So, two questions on timeline. The consultant's good through the end of June?
Correct, and I would expect we will be signing a new contract for year three, which will cover this. We can do this, the low-impact development here, I have, I have the power, I have the ability, I can, I mean, I can search out other bylaws, we can stitch stuff together.
We could do this at fall town meeting.
Correct, yes, it's not, we're not.
I feel like with the low-impact development stuff, and I'm seeing the Westminster stuff for the first time tonight, I'd like a chance to review it.
We're not required to have this until year three, originally it was year two, then there was a lawsuit, and part of the settlement bumped it to year three. He offered to come to a meeting, anytime you guys want to talk to him, I'm trying to save that for if you really think that you have questions that you want to nail down with him.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but in my mind, we should take a little more time and sort through.
I agree, yeah, this is, yeah, so I did, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening fully, but did you say that the planner from Westminster is willing to come here and talk to us?
No, the, our stormwater consultant.
Oh, okay.
I could probably convince Steve to come and talk to you, but it might cost me personally.
How long has he been there?
I don't know.
He was new five or six years ago?
He's, yeah, he's been there longer than I've been here, I think.
Okay, yeah, I know, he did a, yeah, nevermind. Yeah, smart guy, I like him.
So this is, this was initially, these changes were proposed to meet the requirements of our permit.
They still are proposed, yes.
And that has now been extended.
Yeah, the requirement that this bylaw be updated to meet the permit has been extended into year three.
Okay.
So technically, we have fall town meeting or ATM 21.
Correct.
Technically, but we shouldn't push it that close.
No, I'd like to know.
I think it makes a lot of sense to wait, because it gives us more time to fully vet the thing, and we can focus on earth removal at this town meeting.
Yeah, I think if we do both of these at town meeting.
So I'll be submitting two articles to town meeting for earth removal.
One is.
The new bylaw, and one that just changes Board of Selectmen to Planning Board.
Yes.
Okay.
And did we, did we officially say, don't submit the rules and regs?
You did not. You have, you have, I'm not gonna submit it, it's not going on the warrant.
It doesn't get submitted.
Worst, worst or best-case scenario, I guess, depending on how you look at it, they would be a handout on the table at town meeting.
I can see both sides of that argument.
There isn't, there isn't a winning side to it, it's.
Yeah, because a lot of the people at last, at the meeting in the fall, well, what are in the regs?
Yeah.
There was this fear of the unknown, and.
His point is very well taken, that it does, it muddles what, because 80% of what we heard people say that was actually in reference to either of the documents was regulation-based.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not the passage of that, it's.
But the other side of that is.
They could be scared.
Is not knowing, and then just giving the planning board the authority to do it.
I agree, yeah.
Well, Ian, especially seeing as how we put the regs out there.
Correct.
And then we go to town meeting, and then they're not there.
Yeah.
In my mind, you know, and combined, it's 12 pages. In my opinion, it's not overwhelming.
I, I think that the, the flip side of having them and saying, oh, well, they're out there, now they're not here, I mean, the board is, right now, had discussions that maybe there are things in the regs we need to change, and maybe it doesn't get done by town meeting, and it's, okay, well, we had a draft, we realized they need more work, there's still a public hearing to be had, and I think that was part of the confusion at the previous town meeting, was there was no language about public hearing. So I'm not advocating one way or the other, I think that both are workable, and both have pluses and minuses, and I think the board collectively, not at 10 o'clock at night, not the day after the time change, needs to, needs to have some discussions amongst itself about how and, and what that might look like. And I think having Marissa here would, would probably be beneficial to that conversation as well, because, I mean, in theory, you'll all be at town meeting, and we'll have a robust discussion.
All right, so we're gonna stop the stormwater discussion there?
Yep.
Very good, we will move on to minutes approval, we have one set of minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of 2:24:20.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Committee reports, capital planning's done for the year, stormwater task force not meet until April, AGCOM has not met since our last meeting. However, we are going to be back here tomorrow night to appoint two new members, or to recommend that the Board of Selectmen appoint two new members, and, yeah, that's it. So.
Building Design Committee has not met, we will be doing a kickoff meeting with the architect at our next meeting, which I believe is this Wednesday.
Open space and land acquisition hasn't met, and quite frankly, I was wondering why, now I know.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if he's away, I don't know if he's got something else going on, but we have not, we've had radio silence, so.
Okay, okay. MRPC, I attended the meeting on Thursday, and somehow ended up on the nominating committee.
Somehow.
No, I did not volunteer, by any stretch of the imagination. So on the nominating committee, not a lot happened. Anyone interested in serving on the board is encouraged to let MRPC know. There was one bit of information I found interesting, there's money available for culvert replacement, but requests have to begin by March 25th. Did you receive?
It's incredibly specific.
Okay, you did receive that notification?
Yeah, it's the, it's the Division of Ecological Restoration.
Yeah, yeah.
So it needs to have a significant ecological benefit.
I can think of many.
And, well, and I believe the DPW director is working on something, and it has to do with wildlife passage, and being able to meet certain ecological standards. He and I went a couple of years ago to a pre-RFR meeting, and it was, it was very detailed what they required, but I believe he's, he's looked into it.
Okay, so that was the only thing that I thought would be of interest.
I have another question about the culvert replacement program thing. We, capital planning funded culvert replacement on Flat Hill at Lake Shirley. It's already been funded, could we apply for grant funding through something like that?
The bridge there?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know.
But you've been in conversation with Jack, so.
I haven't, I mean, I know he's looking at it, I don't know what he's looking at specifically. Where that is a culvert where the water flows, a lot of the ones they do are generally upsizing the culvert to include space for land animals to also pass.
Mm-hmm.
That one's underwater most of the time, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's talked specifically about fish passes and stuff.
Yeah, and again, I, I.
It's very interesting to see whether or not, and I have the same thought, I mean, I know that there's, you know, a culvert over at, on South Row Road, you know, that could use some upgrades, I mean, so I just, with all the lakes that we have in the community, and all the outfalls and all the culverts, I just wonder if there are.
And that, that all falls within the DPW.
Yeah. But, you know, to Matt's point, I mean, if we have money in the capital plan, that we could avoid spending.
I think it was, I think it was 200 for the engineering and.
200, 200,000?
Mm-hmm, I think so, yeah, and, yeah, it's actually.
Yeah, we might want to look at that one.
I would have thought he would have called it a bridge, but he called it a culvert, so.
I think technically, it's a culvert, I think there's a pipe there.
Oh, yeah, I think it's just a giant, it's a 48-inch.
Well, and it sounds, and it sounds like it would meet the animal passage, then.
Yeah.
Now, what do they do, make a shell? The water sits here, and then there's like a sidewalk.
There's a little bridge for the animals.
A lot of them, what they are, is they're, they're not like the lake, they're a stream that runs through a 36-inch, and instead of that, they open it up to a six-foot open bottom box, and so while the stream runs down the middle, there's a rocky slope here, and there's a dirt slope here, and the deer can creep their way through, and the fish swim in the little brook.
Now, do they put signage there to let the wildlife know where they're supposed to cross?
Yeah, and they also, they also put things to keep the youth deer from smoking under the bridge.
Well, could you ask Jack to look specifically at that one?
Yeah, I, I did put a note in there.
Okay, so, committee reports, who's next?
That's it.
MRPC, Director's item, Citizen Party Caucus coming up.
So, yep, Monday, a week from today, Party Caucus.
Who's up?
Marissa.
Marissa, okay.
Ian.
And, and the empty chair.
And the empty chair, yeah.
So.
Do we know the terms?
Four and five years.
Okay.
I believe Marissa is, well, she, she would be whichever.
We.
Yeah, I mean, they're, both terms are up, so if she went, and they'd probably say for the five-year, and someone would probably nominate her if she's willing.
Has she intended?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we might want to.
Yeah, I'll follow up with her and find out.
I don't think they have to be there to be nominated.
No, they don't.
No, but they have to accept the nomination when they call.
Well, that's fine, she can be nominated, whether or not she accepts it, whatever.
Yeah, but it would be nice to know if she plans to continue.
Yeah.
She seems pretty happy here.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, me too. So that's the Catacunamom, too, that bridge, so definitely wildlife court, water fishery.
All right, so. And then you had asked, who owns the land? And that was a little bit more nebulous question than I, so I will say I was partially right, and I was partially wrong. The municipal corporation owns the land, always, and it's assigned care and custody of individual bodies. And when the TCP building was turned over to the Board of Selectmen, the way the article was written indicated the TCP building and associated land as depicted on the plan. This is the plan, what you have is the plan. So the school committee has care and custody of everything to the right of the funny dotted line, and the town has care and custody of everything to the left on Lot A, as part of TCP.
So what about Lot B?
I believe Lot B was a separate article, but I believe it's also the town, because that's the Brooks House.
So technically, then, this line is what we're looking for, just to separate school from municipal.
Mm-hmm, but it's already separated.
No, it's not, there's not been, it's not.
Well, it's, it's, it's separated in care and custody, it's not separated in physical.
That's wonderful, it does nobody any good. Nobody can do what they want with that until, I mean, they can't even get the damn articles right at town meeting.
Well, but the town, but the town could do something with it.
And it's been four years.
Yep.
Yeah.
But the town could do something with it, they don't need to separate the land off.
Well, they can't separate Lot A like it is anyway, because it's got no frontage.
But they don't need to separate it.
Why don't they need to separate it?
It's not viable, this.
Why would they need, it has frontage if it's, if it's part of the other law.
Because you got a 60,000-square-foot building on a lot with no frontage?
But it doesn't, but it's not separated.
Yeah, and.
This plan, this plan isn't an A and R plan.
Okay.
It's a care and custody plan, so it's an internal division. So if you, because the municipal corporation owns it, they're assigning care and custody internally to different portions of the lot. I understand why you're frustrated, and I understand what you're saying, and yes, I can see why you would do, why that would be bothersome, and I can see why you would want them to divide it, but that doesn't mean that they have to, there's, I mean, they could continue to operate in the way that they're.
If they wanted to sell it, then they would have.
If they wanted to sell it, they would have to divide it, absolutely.
But if it stays in the town, if it stays under the town's ownership, they can divide it by care and custody.
Correct.
Well, and there are provisions in the subdivision bylaws that would allow them to, in regards to Brooks House specifically, to create a quote-unquote "non-conforming" lot around an existing structure, as a means there.
To make it more conforming, but it's in the village district, there's a zero lot line, there's a zero lot size, so.
There's still a frontage required, right?
And they have frontage, some frontage required 75 feet.
Where is it?
On Mass Ave.
For the Brooks House.
On Mass Ave, on the Brooks House.
Okay, that's Lot B.
Correct.
What about Lot A?
But he, Tanner was talking specifically to the Brooks House.
I'm just addressing the Brooks House.
Oh, oh, I got you. Oh, oh, I gotcha. So, if they, they can do whatever they want with the building, but in order to convey the building with the land, they would need the A and R, that's, that was correct.
That's what I'm digging at there, is just specifically talking about Brooks House, it seems to me that the, we could make something work there.
And I don't believe, where are we?
And then, in terms of TCP, I mean, I don't know, you know, this plan references reconfiguring Memorial Drive, so depending on what that looks like, theoretically, you could be creating frontage there if you extend the roadway.
I was gonna say, right now, Memorial Drive does not exist on that parcel.
Okay.
It, it ends, it ends at the library.
Doesn't the driveway for the school come down where that proposed reconfiguration is? Doesn't the existing driveway for the school come down?
All through there. I mean, it's, it's an existing paved road that goes right into the circle there.
What do we, I'm not sure, I'm...
So, when, when you go into the high school?
Yep.
Isn't it, see where the, this line is coming down from the parking lot? This comes out onto Mass Ave.
Yes.
So, where is, this driveway right on this plane just kinda cuts off? Is it this driveway?
That, yeah, it's that driveway.
Yeah.
So, if they were, if we were to reconfigure Memorial Drive this way, basically, you're saying a portion of the, of the existing driveway would be Memorial Drive.
It's already configured that way, because it's not technically Memorial Drive, but if you enter Memorial Drive to the left of the library, like you're driving to Kids' Kingdom.
Yeah, you can go up TC.
There's the fire gate to your right, and the road driveway, however you wanna...
I mean, if, if the town really felt they needed to do it, they could extend the portion of Memorial Drive behind the library, add a small cul-de-sac to prevent cut-through traffic, which is why the gates are up all the time now anyway, and create both frontage and eliminate their, their cut-through portion.
But our point, this discussion really revolved around...
Where's the Brooks House?
Yeah, Brooks House.
I mean, from the design committee's standpoint, and I probably should've shared this at the committee report, but we will not have an article with a budget for town meeting. We just, we simply don't have the time, so our goal is to have a full update, and have the architect up to speed, and do a presentation at town meeting, but there will be no money associated with it. But there will be a heavy focus on the civil engineering aspects to address the driveway and parking and so on for TCP, because, I mean, the driveway to the high school is a driveway, and it...
Yes, that's all it is.
I mean, you roll through there, even when there's town meeting or something, the overflow parking is all behind TCP. You go through there on a Saturday, the cars are all parked on the shoulder of the road, going to the...
Especially in fall and spring.
I mean, it just, it, so clearly, there is some issues, and they've been identified, so hopefully, that's part of the process, and I did communicate to the committee that the APDC is concerned about the Brooks House in particular, so that should all be in the scope of that engineering to hopefully flush out what can be done there. So...
All right, well, thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
In your, in your journey for answers, did you spark anybody's interest?
No. I, I believe it's on the selectman's agenda for tomorrow night to review the requests. My understanding is they're also looking at having meetings with stakeholders revolving around those types of projects, so...
Stakeholders such as?
Such as the Planning Board, APDC, other people involved in stakes.
Citizens of the town. Everybody?
Cows, everybody.
We need to go home.
Cows' lives matter. Cows have stakes.
All right, notice and communication has been scanned to us. We know when we meet and where we meet, March 23rd. We have continued that public hearing for the Stormwater, and we're gonna have their site plan review.
You're not gonna have the site plan review.
Site plan review is April 13th, Stormwater is the 23rd.
Okay, I'm sorry, April 13th. Site plan approval. Historical Commission Chair, committee...
So, I did, I did speak to the Historical Commission Chair, and essentially told her that the likelihood of her getting any sort of endorsement from you was pretty low, and she said, that's okay, I'm coming anyway. So, she's gonna come and shoot her shot.
Awesome. No, I mean, I'll support her all day long, I just, I don't think it's gonna get any traction. I mean, I support it. I've, I've tried to bring it up a couple of times myself. Community preservation is, is huge. So, the 123 is already been determined, right? Mm-hmm. 13th, 27th, we got one thing for the 13th, okay. Ongoing items, solar energy, off-street parking, master plan.
The March 23rd meeting, the select board is that, what's the question mark for?
I don't know if they're coming or not.
It's on their agenda for tomorrow, he said.
Okay, to determine...
So, if they respond that they're coming, then I'll, I'll contact the APDC and say, hey, why don't you come on down, and if they say they're not, then...
Then we're on our own.
Then we're, yeah. We're doing this again.
All right, so, just to summarize, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on Stormwater after annual town meeting, and then we're probably gonna focus on master plan in conjunction with?
Yes, and I would hope we would focus on Stormwater continuing, but...
Well, I mean, we need, we need to tighten up that earth removal as much as we can before town meeting.
Correct, but I, I would, I would caution when saying we're, we're not going to work on earth removal, or on Stormwater. 'Cause I, I would like for people to read it and provide input, or ask questions, or other things like that in the interim, so that when it comes time to work on it, we're not trying to restart our Stormwater engines.
We've only got three meetings before town meeting, so...
He's just looking for feedback between now and then, just catch up.
I'm not saying let's spend three hours on it, I just, I, I don't wanna say, yeah, just put it off until after town meeting, and have everybody just sit on it.
Review it, get your miscomments.
Have we gotten a quote on the master plan?
I spoke to her last week, and she said that I should see it early this week.
This is just the population?
Yeah. And I'm still stitching together the RFP.
And do we have another $50,000 on the...
No.
Okay.
The board said they didn't wanna go for it until they had made some progress, and had some, something to show. I also think that the positive to that will be, you'll have an idea of what you've spent on, on what, and if 50 wasn't enough, you can ask for more, or if it was enough, you can say, look, we did this much with 50, let's bulk it up.
All right, so, we on to public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive, I didn't hear the jokes, so no worries. In terms of the earth removal warrant article, I think it just has a lot to do with us presenting it in terms of the alternative, in which case, I would ask if we could get feedback from Casey, or Heather, or Town Council on how we will move forward with correctly managing the bylaw we have. Because I think in all seriousness, that should be a part of this, or at least it would be from my perspective at the meeting, is input from how they will begin following the bylaw we have, in case the new one doesn't pass. I think that's only fair now, in terms of, like, once you know you're not following a law, and you continue to not follow it.
There should be some repercussions.
And a lot of people have said that they don't follow it. And so, I would just like formal input from the town employees, specifically Casey, on how he will begin implementation of our current bylaw.
Existing bylaw, yeah.
Yeah, and there we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, CPTC's coming up. I don't know, I've never seen you there.
What is CPTC?
Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. It's a annual, all-day, Saturday conference.
They have three sessions, they got 18 different things you can choose from, usually like six, 12, eight, six.
When, when is it?
It's in...
21st.
March?
Yeah.
Never mind, forget I said it.
I won't be there.
That reminds me, I haven't signed up for it either. All right, any board comments, concerns?
Nope.
Nope.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.